In attendance here in the council chambers, do we have anyone who would like to make public comment? Seeing none. Kat, do we have anyone online for public comment?
Nope.
No public comment online. Then we will get right to it. Item D.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to consider and take action on the proposed 2022-2023 budget.
Second? Motion is second. Kathy?
So, did you want to just kind of go through the schedule tonight? So, as you can see, we have the Board of Education here. So, they'll start, they'll come up to the table below, and we have them slotted for about an hour. Then from there, we have our department heads that are going to come in. We're going to take a break for dinner, but we do, just so you know, we do have Economic Development is going to be giving a presentation, and the library will be giving a presentation. And then we'll have all the other department heads come through, and we're going to try to go get through all the town side of the budget, and we're slotted to stay until nine o'clock tonight. And typically, we do not take any action on any items. When we go through the items in the, we'll be working off your budget book, so I hope everyone has their budget books with them, and we tentatively approve things. And then if there's any questions that we want to come back to particular items or pages, we usually take a tally of those, and then we come back to them closer to the end of the session. Does that work for you?
Works.
Good?
Okay.
All right, so I will turn it over to the Board of Education.
Please join us at the table here. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Town Council, for having us here before you. As you know, we're here to present the Board of Education Fiscal Year 2022-2023 Budget. We believe it represents our commitment to both you and the citizens and students of Farmington to put forward a fiscally responsible budget that meets our needs. We're happy to take any questions this afternoon. And with that, I'll give you Superintendent Kathy Greeter.
So, I'm happy to be with you this afternoon once again. And as a reminder, our total budget request for 2022-2023 is $74,448,257 with a 2.99% increase over the 2021-2022 budget. We will go section by section through the budget book. We'll also reference some of the slides just to give you another look at particular budget drivers within this budget. So I'm going to turn this over to Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, Alicia Bowman, and she will introduce each section. And then once she introduces the section, we'll open up to any questions within that section.
Great.
All right, good afternoon. You know, you had the opportunity to preview our, the board's budget yesterday, and now I'll walk you through the budget book in greater detail, section by section. The opening pages of the budget booklet include the superintendent's budget message, which I gave you an updated letter this evening, so that was what was at your table. That serves as a summary of our strategic and collaborative approach to the budget process, including the alignment of our budget priorities to district goals and commentary on our budget drivers. Next, you'll see the agendas outlining the structure of our meetings. And then the first tab, if you go to the introduction tab, that includes the chart of the budget summary as compared to the 21-22 budget, a pie chart that visually presents the breakdown of our budget by percentage of each object, outline of our budget development philosophy, which is guided by our core documents. And lastly, in the intro section, you find our 2022-2023 budget summary. Then each budget section following the introduction is rolled up into a larger bucket or object. So I'll provide an overview of each of the six sections: salaries, benefits, services, supplies, equipment, and dues and fees. So we're going to start with the salaries tab. Sophie, if you want to open that one up. So the first budget driver is salaries. This accounts for 66% of the total budget. As you can see, the beginning page of each section shows the pie chart illustrating the percentage of the total budget that's dedicated to that particular object. The budget increase in the salary line is 6.4, or sorry, 3.46% overall, and reflects all negotiated contractual obligations. This series reflects each association's salary increases for the coming year, which are highlighted on this slide. Do you have any questions on this section of the budget?
Looks like we're good.
Okay. We're going to flip to the next section. The second budget driver is benefits, which accounts for 16% of the total budget. The budget increase in the benefits line is 0.93% overall and provides 100% of the expected claims and administration of our employee health insurance. All associations within the Farmington Public Schools have a high deductible HSA with coinsurance. This series also includes workers' compensation, unemployment insurance, FICA Medicare, and other contractual benefits like life, long-term disability, and retirement contributions. Do you have any questions about this section of the budget booklet?
Seeing none.
Okay. We'll flip to services. The third budget driver, oh, is services, which accounts for 14% of the total budget. The budget increase in the services line is 2.446% overall and reflects a variety of essential services for our school, including consultation services and outplaced tuition costs for special education, major facility projects, utilities, K-8 summer school programs, core applications and systems for our district technology operations, student transportation, and professional development programs. Any questions about the services section of the budget?
Three for three.
Are you timing me? All right, we're going to move to supplies. Supplies section accounts for 2.6% of the total budget. The budget increase in the supply line is 3.98% overall and reflects the facility rentals for athletics, in addition to a wide range of instructional supplies, health, custodial, computer testing supplies, textbooks, library books, AV and computer materials. Just to note, this proposal also reflects a reinstatement of funding from 21-22 budget reductions. Any questions about the supply section?
What was the increase on that one?
The increase in that one is a 3.9. Okay. We'll move on to the next section, which is equipment. The fifth section is equipment. That accounts for half percent of the total budget. The budget increase in the equipment line is 30.25% overall and reflects facility and technology equipment. This series also experienced major reductions in our 21-22 budget, and this proposal reflects a restoration of funding for 2022-2023. Any questions regarding equipment?
I do have one.
Joe?
Thank you.
Sure.
Just obviously, last year, we had everybody at home, one-on-one computers. How did our system hold up for all, everybody being on the system at once? Do we have a lot of breakdowns with the children with their, with their personal computers at home?
I mean, I don't want to speak to that. I can tell you my perspective.
We were able to provide device, school-issue devices to all K-12 students. We did have a number of high school students that chose not to take advantage of that and did use a personal device. Our repairs are up, given the fact that we've got more devices in circulation. We were able to use SRTI funding last year, which was part of that reduction, to help bolster the purchase of additional devices. This year, we're looking to utilize SRTI funding to help with that as well. So, but overall, the performance of the machines that are bandwidth, everything was accommodated all of the students throughout the district.
Great. And I know that families who are provided the opportunity to buy insurance in case something happened, did a lot of families take advantage of it? Or did you find that some slipped through the cracks and...
So, we, our percentage-wise, we really didn't increase in the amount of families that took advantage of the insurance. There is enough there to cover annual repair costs. And anytime we have a family that has a broken device, or there's an issue with, with a student's Chromebook, we work with the family individually. Whether they've bought insurance or not, we're still working with them. The insurance is there to cover them should it be a major damage. And we've had a couple of them that have been major damaged. And we, we do always offer the, the family the option to purchase the insurance, even if they hadn't done it at the beginning of the year.
Great. Thank you very much.
Other questions on the equipment? Okay.
Okay, and our final section is dues and fees, which accounts for three, or 0.3 or 3/10ths of a percentage of the total budget and an increase of 2.53%. This section includes memberships to professional organizations, liability, automotive, and property insurance. Any questions about this section of the budget?
I thought that was going to be all the questions right there.
Is it an increase, or you have a minus 2.5?
Yeah, I am, a decrease, I'm sorry, of 2.53%. And that decrease also reflects the movement of one of our programs into the proper account, but that's what's, accounts for that decrease. And then in the back of the budget booklet, following the six major sections, you'll find other supporting budgetary documents, which include our capital budget request we presented to the Town Council on February 22nd, federal and state grants, enrollment reports, and some comparative data with other districts in the state, also other districts in our DURG, or District Reference Group, and then also salary schedules for our various associations. Are there any other questions?
Rafine?
I have a question. Thanks, everyone, for coming on this snowy day. So we were talking last night about ARPA funding and Esser funding, and for the folks who are not following along, but maybe reading this later, can you explain what those are and the difference, if there is one, between Esser and ARPA?
Sure. So, ARP-ESER was the latest amount of, that's okay, grant funding that was given to us. And the ARP stands for the American Rescue Plan. There are five priorities under which, or categories, which you can apply for funds under that grant. And so the, the five categories are learning acceleration, academic renewal, and student enrichment, family and community connections, social, emotional, and mental health of students and staff, strategic use of technology, staff development in the digital divide, and building safe and healthy schools. Though, the, this grant, we had to apply for over the summer. It is a grant that had to be post, it has to be posted on our website. I don't know if you know, but we had to get community feedback on how we were proposing to use the funds, and we have to continue to get feedback on that every six months. So if we make any changes or adjustments to our plan, we post it, and then we also solicit community feedback and input on how we're using the funding. As a district, we have a strategic, long-term plan. All of the funds have been accounted for. Actually, the group that's here with me is, is really the team. We meet regularly to review, you know, what our funding plan is and, and how it's going. I don't know if you want more specifics in terms of like the next, the next level of...
No.
Okay.
I think a lot of folks are a little unclear. So we've talked as a council about the ARPA funding and what those funds could be used for. So the Town Council and the Ad-Hoc Committee is thinking about a larger capital project. And yesterday, the Esser versus ARPA fund issue came up because we were talking about the ventilation systems that we're thinking about putting in schools. And the specific question Johnny and I were, you know, batting around like, well, why couldn't we use that funding for that project like this year instead of next year? And I understand that the issue is a little more complex than that. It's not only the funding, but it's also the supplies that we wouldn't be able to get anyway this year. So I think a lot of parents with, you know, especially in the lower elementary schools, you know it gets really hot come May.
Mm-hmm.
And then especially if you've got like the kids with the red cheeks and the matted down hair. So like practically speaking, that would be a fantastic way to get those funds directly to do what we need to for the schools. So I think that there was this kind of like a meta-question of like, could we get those funds sooner? But maybe you can explain a little bit about how the ARPA funds, ARP-ESER, were used in this specific budget to kind of, sort of, decrease our tax burden, like, overall.
Sure. So some of the ways that we've used this funding to offset the budget, would that be helpful?
Yes.
We've used it for staffing reasons, like specialized reading teacher. We've used it for transition programming. We've used it for numerous consultations and program reviews, health supplies, custodial supplies, textbooks, online curriculum enhancement, and like remote learning enrichment programs. It helped us with additional summer school programming and student support that was necessary due to remote learning, additional mental health supports, technology equipment, licensing, and software. So...
That's a lot.
It is a lot.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if we mentioned this last time, but there, we recently received communication from the state that there, the governor's looking at funding for other additional HVAC programs and grants that districts may be able to apply to. There's not a lot of detail on it yet, but that's something that's definitely being talked about as well.
Okay. And then when that funding, so the ARP-ESER, I'm going to refer that for another couple of...
It's okay.
...go-arounds. So that funding is for the next two years, it's for the next three years? Like how is that, how long do we have that funding for?
Another good question. So that funding extends to the fall, a summer of 2024.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So there's still another couple of years?
Yep.
Okay. All right, thank you for all that information.
You're welcome.
All right. Other questions? Seeing none. Is there anything else you all would like to add? This is uncharted territory, I think. It's, you know, I'll, I'll just make a statement. I think all of us who were actively lobbying for the passage of the high school were very clear in saying we did not want to see any budgets with a tax increase above 3%. And you all came in below that, which I tremendously appreciate. I'm sure the town appreciates that. And I think, you know, we, we've all seen that. We, I think that made tonight a little faster than it may have otherwise. You know, it's not our job to question how you're spending the money. It's simply our job to say, this is the budget you have this year. And you came in with a very good and very fiscally conservative budget, and as such, it doesn't seem like there's a whole lot for us to ask you tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we will let you know if we have questions.
Okay.
If you're following.
You know where to find us.
Hopefully Kathy Blonsky's out there somewhere and... Ready to come back in?
Okay.
Okay, we're going to take like a two-minute break from council just for the recording focus. Okay, it is 4:26. We will be resuming our budget hearings.
All right.
Kathy Blonsky.
So we're all going to be working off our book, and we're going to start at the beginning at general administration, which is the yellow tab. So the general administration group of accounts has a 0.26% increase. Some things to note in this account, this is again our general government. It's the town manager finance, the town council's account, personnel, town clerk, economic development, planning and zoning, public buildings, and insurance. One of the reasons, the major reason why this account is at the 0.26% is because some of you remember last year, we had the extra pay period in the budget, and that extra pay period is gone. So we were able to take that money out. So that in general has helped the town side of the budget because of that. So in general, the rest of the accounts are relatively flat. There is some increases. We found increases in software and some technology and those types in the finance area, which is assessors and tax. The registrar voters who are not coming tonight, but they're part of it, they, they do have an increase, and that's because of the extra elections that they're going to have. So there's some increases in, for them. In the personnel services account, if you, some of you remember is that when the collective bargaining agreements are not settled, we put a lump sum of money in the personnel account, and then when the, the agreements are settled, they get moved into the accounts. So we have, last year, none of the, I think none of the accounts were settled, none of the unions, right? So there was a large sum of money in the personnel account. This year, there's only two that aren't settled, so that's why the personnel services account has gone down. But that, where that money is, is in the individual accounts in the individual departments. So that's where that is.
Does it point out when we hit departments and it's a raise, that had to do with that?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
So when we hit different departments, you'll point out if that's where some of the money or the increase of it was?
Yeah, well, you can, you'll be able to see it because if you look like in the highway and grounds, they're, they're settled. So their personnel account in the highway and grounds, you'll see that their number is probably a 3% or 4% increase. And compared to when we talk about the police department, because they're not settled, their money is here, their increase is like, in the personnel account is like a 1% or 2%. It's because the salaries are in the personnel here. So that's what the difference is.
And actually...
Oop, did I misspoke?
Yeah, that may not occur. The two union contracts that are not settled are police and fire. So it's our largest, one of our largest units, one of our smallest units. So those salaries, their increases are in the salaries, or ASME and SEIU are in the departments for next year. You may not see it in some departments because what Kathy alluded to in the 27th pay period, that 27th pay period, when you take it out of the departments for next year, but actually some departments won't have a substantial increase. You'll have an increase, but it's going to be offset by that 27th pay period not being there next year.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And the library is part of this, but they're going to come separately. So the, the budget pages for the general administration are budget pages 1 through 25. And typically, if you have any specific questions on any of those pages, I'd be more than happy to answer those.
Okay. So I'll give you all a minute to review your notes and see if you have any questions on pages 1 through 25.
I'm trying to find the exact page, but on the, the first page here, the, the planning and zoning being up 23%, could you provide a little bit more insight into what's driving that?
Yes, I can. And hold on, I wrote it down. Planning and zoning. So what happened there is that we've, we've moved a position into the, in there. So if you look on page 18... Kat, help me out here. If you look on page 18, the, the narrative page, you'll see there that we went zoning enforcement development specialist, you went from 0.5 to 0. And then if you go to page 54... Go to page 54. We went zoning enforcement development specialist, 0.5 to 0. So all we really did is that we took money out of the engineering department, and we moved it into the planning and zoning department. So it's no new change of anything. It's just a, just a swapping because the position got changed.
Gotcha. And is, is another driver the, the fact that we're going to have a, we have a senior assistant town planner as well, whereas we didn't have that before?
That was the, that was the zoning enforcement development specialist position. So basically, what we're getting in this, in this budget is if you're gaining a half a position.
Mm-hmm.
And that's one of the drivers. The other driver in this department is that three out of the four positions are SEIU positions. So you're also getting three years worth, I'm sorry, two years worth of salary increases. This is one of those departments where you would see the salary increases more notably than most departments because it's three, three SEIU positions, all their contracts are settled for next year. So you have this year's budget salary increase, next year's salary increase in the department itself. So you gained a half a position, plus you gained the raises for the, all the employees.
The, this area, the development area is a little bit confusing because we've had some, we've done some restructuring, we've had some promotions, we've changed positions around based on staffing. So money's been moved in and out out of different things. So again, what the drivers are is that we did add a half a position, correct? It was added half a position, and that's really what the only driver is. The rest of it's just moving the money around.
Got it. Makes sense. Thank you.
Okay.
And that half position, I believe you just described, is a half position that basically came out of engineering because there was a half position over there that was zoning enforcement development specialist.
Yes, that position was split between two different budgets. Engineering and...
So now it's totally in this budget.
Totally in planning.
Right. And the reason why, if you want to know why we do that, is because it's actually what their function is. And so like, if you, if you work, our building inspector also is our development inspector. So the development inspector's budget is engineering, the building inspector's budget's building. So that's why they split positions. So if they don't split positions anymore, and that's what we've done, we've made some changes, the whole salary goes into the appropriate accounts.
Great. Okay, other questions? On those first 25 pages? Okay, looks like we're good. Second tab.
So usually, we have a TA for pages 1 through 25.
All right. Takes our tentative approval here.
Make a motion to tentatively approve pages 1 through 25 of the budget.
Second? We have a motion, a second for tentative approval. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
I think our next one is going to be page 14, and that's Rose Ponti, our Economic Development Director.
Nice to see you. So throughout this past year, if you look at my budget, I pretty much make a policy to keep it flat. I think that's pretty important, to be able to make sure that all my expenses are tied directly to my goals. So anything that you see in that budget is really tied directly to the goals that are in the strategic plan and also my department goals. What I usually like to do during this budget presentation is really to talk a little bit about what is happening in Farmington. And we always like to say that Farmington is the economic leader in the Hartford region, but I like to look at some data to make sure that that data proves what we say. And so of the 29 towns and cities in the, in the Hartford area, in the Hartford region, Farmington has a fourth lowest mill rate at 28.81. We stand behind Windsor Logs, which is now at 25.83, Hartland, which is at 27, and Suffield, which is at 28.64. Still very good because not all of those towns are able to deliver the type of services we deliver. So I think that's a very important indicator that we're being fiscally responsible. So our commercial base really contributes a very important amount to the tax base. They are at 32.3%, which really means that the entire burden that is... They are at 32.3%, which really means that the entire burden that is a tax burden is not carried on by our residents. It's also an indication of a very thriving business community. I thought it would be interesting to see because sales of residential homes have been flying. Joe, you probably know that, you've been busy, I'm sure. So our median residential sale, sale price at this point is at $458,000. And our median household income for a family is at $93,053. Nationally, that number is $62,843, so we're quite a bit higher than the national number. And the individual household income for Farmington is $47,485. And nationally, it's at $31,133. Again, just some numbers that you understand how we're faring against the rest of the states. Our current unemployment rate in Farmington really improved over last year. We're at 2.9% and the state where, is still at 4.4%. Also a great improvement in the unemployment rate on the state level from last year at this time. So when you look at our commercial base, it's made up of 4.1 million square feet of office space, which is a lot of office space. And in the past, last year at this time, our vacancy rate was 5.3. It has climbed to 8.1, which shouldn't be surprising to any of us with the new remote work that has become so, you know, much of the norm. So again, that's an area that I'm putting a lot of focus on and just trying to make sure that I understand what exactly is happening there. Our industrial, we have 2.1 million square feet of industrial space and that only has a 1.3 vacancy rate. In fact, many big projects that are coming to the state in the, in terms of development projects, our big distribution centers, big warehousing centers, as you can imagine, because so much commerce is now e-commerce. And we just don't have the space or the green space even, to even be able to be in competition with that. So just, you know, having a, a little bit of a, of an insight into our business community. So this past year, and especially over the past several years, I'd have to say, one of my biggest focuses has been on communication, communicating with our businesses, communicating with our residents, and connecting the two. And I know I've been before you already to talk about Explore Farmington, but I thought that again, I'd give you some data to see how is it that we're doing. So year over year, we, we post daily on Facebook and Instagram. We post as needed on LinkedIn and then we send a weekly email to people and we send a monthly business newsletter. So our stats have really gone up quite a bit. In face, our Facebook reach has gone up 816%, which is such a huge number. When I saw it, I questioned it, but I started checking it with last year's numbers and it's correct. It's at 210,816 for the year. That is how Facebook calculates its statistics on how many people read our posts and it has reached. Our new Facebook likes, that has gone up quite a bit as well. 876 more people like us on a regular basis. Our Instagram reach is up 121% and that's at almost 4,000 people, meaning that each time our Instagram post goes out there, that's a cumulative effect over the year. Our visits, our Facebook visits have stayed pretty stable and our Instagram profile visits are up 97%. So our followers, I kinda checked back and in March of 2020, we had 647 Facebook followers and as of today, we have 1,918 followers. So it has taken some focus and some work, but I think the numbers are bearing fruit that people are seeing these posts and, and it is being reached. We use constant contact to really communicate with our residents and last year we sent out 85,000 emails, that's to individual emails. And we had 29,000 of them open it up, which is a great open rate of 34%, 36%. And that's a growth of about 5%. And we also added 145 new people that subscribed either using the subscribe now to our newsletter, which is on Explore Farmington, or even emailed me myself. I always knew when there was a good email or a good post because people would say, "I heard you have a newsletter, can you send it to me?" And then I would add their, their address. So as, I, I won't go over everything that we, but we improved Explore Farmington quite a bit and it is being used a lot more. And then over this last year, really to help our small businesses, we did three different shop local campaigns. And then we also sent surveys out to make sure that merchants saw some type of a response from those campaigns. And then we, we catered the campaigns to make sure that happened. Last year, we had two in-person breakfasts. The first one was with Advanced CT's Bioscience Business Development Director. And then we invited Mike Goman from Goman &amp; York to really talk to us about what's the new normal in commercial real estate. And, and that was quite a bit of an eye opener. We have a number of development projects that are currently underway and you'll see that Metro Realty has a 33,000 square foot medical office building under construction. There's a redevelopment of 240, 244, and 248 Main Street. He's trying to build a little new village center. It's going to be retail and small offices. And then there's a new retail plaza at 54, 56, 58 Farmington Avenue, which is as, as you're going towards the reservoir, you'll see it's a new little retail plaza that's gonna have five different store occupants and he already has three of them leased. We have a couple of, a, a number of projects completed, Chase Manhattan Bank, they're open. And the, the really cool part about that project was the historic preservation of the building behind it. That was completed. Thomaston Bank and the storage facility on Route 6 was completed. And currently underway is a renovation of the former Farmington Marriott. Lots of smaller new businesses like the Hartford Baking Company, Detail Garage, The Vault, Iron Horse Pub, Family Pizza and Kitchen, and Arrow Pharmacy, which, those are small businesses that you think under a pandemic, who would have the nerve to open up? But they did and I appreciate very much those efforts. Seven new stores in the mall. So I tell you these things so you understand that we continue to be a vibrant business community. We've had, you know, some areas of concern with the office space, but overall, the town really continues to be very favorable. Our planning department has never been busier with different meetings and people looking to do new things. And so I just kind of wanted to share all that with you. And of course, if you have any questions, I'm, I'm here.
And Rose, maybe I could just interpoint into things, what you talked about Explore Farmington and that, you know, what we learned is that with the, during the pandemic, the information that Rose was able to bring out to the small businesses about the information, I think was really very, very valuable. And that, I think, the word spread to the, all the different businesses. And, you know, even just to the community, just getting information out on Explore Farmington. And I can definitely see why it would, the numbers are improved that much.
I was surprised when I looked at them.
Really, you know, businesses, when we, all the restaurants, when they had to do the permitting to try to have the outside dining, that flew like wild. Everyone knew about it, everyone was coming in and it really was a great communication tool.
Yeah, I'd agree. It was great seeing our businesses opening up ahead of many other towns and you did a great outreach there, so thank you. And, and moving them along to each different step as the rules were changing, helping them understand what the rules were. You know, we got things like plexiglass faces. And wear masks, curbside pickup, all that stuff was, was great. And Explore Farmington is great for anybody watching, hop on, you got all kinds of great news. Is it Thursday you come out with what's going on for the weekend or is that when?
Yeah, usually Wednesday or Thursday. We're now making it a 10-day because a lot of different events said, Rose, we need more time. So now we do it every 10 days to kind of, you know, spread it out a little more. Yeah, but it's, it's midweek so that people know what's happening in the weekends.
Plan ahead for the weekend.
Yes.
So any questions for Rose? Ed?
Yeah, first I'd like to echo the comments of Kathy and CJ. I think you did a fantastic job in this second year of the pandemic, really giving that personal touch to our, our local businesses and the shop local campaign. And Explore Farmington's been fantastic, it's been great to see that evolve. The Explore Farmington 2.0 presentation you gave us earlier the, last year. And could you talk a little bit about the Wayfinder signage? I know that's another initiative that you're working on.
Yep.
Yeah.
I'm happy to do that, thank you. I'm working with Bruce Seer and Bicycle Advisory Committee. And so we really thought that it was important. We had so many increased users on our trail system and many of them were residents, but a, a whole lot of them were visitors. And when they walked the trails, I don't think many of them realized that our town centers were close by, especially Unionville. So we really focused on Unionville and on the depot crossing area. And we thought, let's put a very simple signage that really tries to draw people, if you're on the trails, letting them know that closely nearby, they have a wealth of different options for restaurants, beverages, even CVS if they have blisters and need a Band-Aid and things of that nature. So we worked with SLR and they did some concepts for us. We went, showed them to ADRC and the Unionville Historic District Committee and they gave us consensus and so now comes the hard part and it's making sure that we have a good sign person that's going to be able to make them for us and then install them. So we're working on that bit of it. One very interesting thing is we're going to coordinate that sign with all the work that's being done on Explore Farmington. And there's gonna be a QR code, so when the trail user wants to scan that QR code, it will then open it up to the places map on Explore Farmington and they could see exactly where they are, so they can see exactly from where they are how they can get. So we're, we're hoping it's going to be successful, people will use it and then we're, you know, we'll, we'll continue throughout the trail and do it in other stops. So we've identified about four other places that we think we should go. So our first number one deliverable will be getting those signs installed hopefully by spring. But spring is almost now, so maybe early summer.
Doesn't feel like it tonight with the.
No, it doesn't feel like it as I'm seeing snow in the window.
Great.
Just a general question. Are there currently trail maps on Explore Farmington?
We have one, we have a number of maps on Explore Farmington that had to do with our gateway project. And we have a historic walking trail through the downtown. And then we also have a cultural trail. And we haven't put all the trails on there. What we do is we do have links under the guide of Experience Local and then those links go directly to the Farmington.
Trails Council.
Trails Council. So we put a link to them because it was a little bit too complicated to, to, because we would have to pay our web designer to recreate those trails again. And why double the work, you know, it's already been done.
For Farm Spring, Rose, any talk with Raytheon, what are they doing? I know it's what, five business buildings in there? I know Marriott gone, but they're changing over to apartments.
Well, we, I, I have heard from CBRE, who is representing that. One of their buildings will definitely be available by the end of the third quarter for 115,000 square feet. So again, that's how the concern starts to build. And so I think our challenge, and, and I think we could, we could address it very well, is really when it happens to be very flexible and adaptable and so being open to other ideas of what can be done. If it's not going to be office space, what should it do, what should it be? I've been attending a number of seminars. I also met with David Lehman, the Commissioner of DCD, that came up. The Commissioner thought the best thing to do is to take all the office and convert it into apartments and residential. I don't know if there's that much of a need for that. We already have a number of multifamily apartments coming before us. But really be, being able to be adaptable, a great example of that is when 100,000 square feet became available at the mall, Lauren Taylors approached the town and they went before planning and zoning and asked if it could be used in, in addition to retail to allow it for medical office space. That's the type of thing we're going to have to do. I think the name of the game in the future will be redevelopment, which is really in our favor because we don't have a lot of green space available to do all new construction. So it's really looking at our buildings, what is underperforming? What is not being used? And what do we need to do to make it of a useful highest use? And so that's going to entail really collaboratively, having this vision and working with developers who want to do something and making sure their plans then coexist and, and complement what we as a town want. So it's gonna, it's gonna take some coordination.
Thank you.
Actually, I do have a question.
Sure.
I'm so excited about everything that you're doing for Farmington.
Oh, thank you.
And, and thank you for helping us thrive as much as we do.
It's my pleasure.
I do have one question about, about Lowman's Plaza. I know this has not been a great time for building, but is there any action going on over there?
You know, Brown, that is a good question. There hasn't been any action, but that is one of my focuses for this year because Jackson Labs is thinking about, or has said that they always have had plans to hopefully grow more. They're being very successful where they are. But they have communicated to me that they don't want to be the only ones in this bioscience arena that, you know, is growing. They, they need other partners. So to make that focus, to make a focus of really growing that whole area. So I have been, I coordinated a meeting with Metro Realty, who is part owner of Lowman's and Jackson Labs. They met with their leadership last month to make sure that both of them understand what each other needs. So Jeff Sager was, you know, very much trying to take all his notes, what do these scientists need? We've already had two companies move out of the TIP, which is a Yukon's Technology Incubator Program. They've grown and thankfully, we were able to keep them in Farmington. But we want to be able to keep them more in Farmington. So it's very difficult to build, not difficult, expensive, to build lab space on spec because the square footage amount is very high. So in order for a developer to build this, you know, it's not as if they will build it and then they will come. So it has to be a coordinated effort. And I'm also working with Advanced CT and, and working with DCD so that they know these are our assets. When you start, you know, recruiting different life science companies, remember this is what we have here in Farmington. And then the last thing we're doing, I've partnered with the Central Chamber of Commerce and they're gonna be doing the Business of Life Science Business Forum. And that's scheduled for May 24th. And that's gonna be a panel discussion with Jackson Labs, the TIP, and a manufacturer who does medical devices. Because we want everyone to start to understand life science, here's a business behind it. So if we start showcasing and bringing more and more attention that there, there are these offerings here in Farmington, then I'm hoping that that will start to bubble the interest and then Lowman's will be able to have an end user.
That's wonderful.
Rose has been spending a lot of time, like she said, just coordinating people. She knows Jackson, she knows this one, she knows that one, and trying to marry them and match them up. And, oh, I think, I think something will.
I hope so, yeah.
I think so.
Does, does it have to stay in that medical corridor?
They really want it. They, I, it was funny, I said, I was trying to tell them about the space that the city of Hartford has, which is not that far away, and they're like, "Oh no, Rose, that's way too far." They need specimens, like if they're working on something, they want to be able to, you know, go right across the street and there's a lot of collaboration that exists. It, it really is a very intricate kind of needs that they have and, and they, they, they need collaborating together. So they, they want a lot of scientists under, in, in one small area. They need healthcare to be near it, which we already have. So we already have a great foundation, we just have to now connect the dots.
And what's the minimum square footage they look for again?
It all depends. If it's a startup, that, the lab could be maybe 400 square feet. But then it's what's in that lab, they have to have a clean lab and they have to have the air exchange. And, you know, they start talking and it goes right over my head a little bit. But it's very interesting to kind of sit back and hear them all and the type of equipment that they all need to share. And do they have enough bandwidth because they do a lot of data? And so there's a lot of requirements for it. It's a, a lot more complicated than I imagined, but I'm learning.
You're doing very well at it.
Oh, thank you.
Other questions for Rose? Great job overall. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Love Explore Farmington and love seeing the small businesses and every business coming down. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you all for all your support.
And Rose's pages are 14 and 15.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to temporarily, a TA pages 14 and 15 of the budget.
Second?
We have a motion and second. Any further discussions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing in.
Have a good evening. I think I'll be short, you guys.
Thank you, Rose.
We have Russ Arnold, our Director of Public Works, up next. Hello, Russ. I almost called you by your nickname. So Public Works is the green tab. It's pages 43 through 54. It's Public Works Administration, Highway and Grounds and Engineering. The proposed request for this Public Works Group account is 4.82% above the current budget. This is basically a flat budget. One of the things I just wanted to note is that in the Public Works Administration account, it does have a large increase on that. The reason for that increase is that Russ's time is split by the budget with the Water Pollution Control Authority. And they're a separate budget than our budget. And over the last few years, we have his, part of his salary, a lar, not a large part, but a larger than now, has been billed to the Water Pollution Control Authority. Because when we were doing the upgrade, he spent a considerable amount of time doing that. Now that that project is, is done, that money is now back into this budget. So that's where the increases on that.
That's basically compensating a previous decrease.
Right. Trying to think if there's really, it's very, a very flat budget. Russ, was there anything in here I think that, that we wanted to note? I went, I went through it just before the meeting and I saw it just being very flat. Yeah. Russ's department and under Russ has been very short staffed over the last year. We're finally getting back up to speed as, even though it's not in this account, but Russ is in charge of the Planning Department also. It's just the whole development wing is, has been extremely, extremely busy over the last two years. Between building permits, being short staffed, issues with planners. And Russ and his group, really his core group of people have really stepped up to the plate. And Russ, as you know, does all our grants for all the state work and the different things that go. So for a while there, Russ was our one man show. We finally were able to hire another engineer, a lower level engineer in his department. And now with the Planning Department stabilized, we have also overall in his department, we've asked for an increase from the part-time fire marshal position to a full-time secretarial position. That position won't just be dedicated to the fire marshal. It'll be dedicated to the whole development wing. And also the other, we had, we're adding a part-time, a half more position to the building official position. So those two things are in, building is on page 42 and fire marshal is on page 26. But that, Russ is in charge of all of those departments too. So really, I think one of the things that we're hopeful for is that you keep your staffing and.
That would be nice.
Yeah.
That would help.
Yeah, it's been, it's been, it's been rough with, difficult to get employees and different things.
Well, it's been a challenging two years, obviously for your department as well. There's been a lot you've been adding to and, which was not in previous job descriptions that had to be done while we're working through COVID and all that. The grants are fantastic. I think we talked about some of the numbers not too long ago of grants that you've brought in. So that's huge.
Right. And Russ and his group in the highway garage and, you know, everyone has really stepped up for everything with COVID. And, you know, we've talked about it before, but even anything that had to do within the town hall, putting up these barriers, everything just to keep the operations running. And he's got a couple of really very handy people in the highway department that are, were carpenters and different things. And really anything that we need to have done, just call up. And in the town clerk's office before, I don't know if anyone was in there when it was really with COVID. We had different things going on because they built things so the clerk's office could stay open. And they have done a great job for us.
Great. Questions for Russ?
I got a quick one.
Go.
Highway Department. How many vehicles do those two mechanics handle? Because obviously they're doing a phenomenal job keeping everything up and running for us and keeping our expenses low.
That is one number I don't have, but we have, God, I'd say somewhere in between.
Do you handle all the vehicles, all the heavy equipment plus all the power equipment?
Yeah. So there must be like no downtime for those two guys?
Not. And what we also do is we have other, we've been lucky, as Kathy said, we hired different people with different skill sets. And we have a certified welder. We have other guys who are mechanically inclined. So they help out and do some of the more immediate day-to-day oil changes and things like that to help two mechanics.
So they're basically offsetting the fabrication stuff that needs to be done. Doesn't need to go out to specialty places. We can take care of it in-house.
Right. We do the majority of our fabrication and welding in-house. We send the truck up to the point for the engine, that the frame weld. Right. So we, things like that where it's, we need some certification. It's going, if they're doing it the right way in accordance with manufacturer specifications. We sent that out to our benefit to send it there. But for the most part, if something needs to be made, we create.
And to go back, we talked about before, previous councils, about how we're going to take care of our own stone, I think at one point, or crushing or something like that?
Yeah. Back in the fall, late fall, we had, we came to you with a process that we, over the years during our road reconstructions and catch basin replacements, we, we collect all that material. So what happens is we, back years ago, you would pay Tilcon or Coloso to come in, reclaim all the material. You'd pay them to put it down. You'd pay them to take it away and you'd pay them to put it back. So we ended up keeping, saying, hey, let's keep some of this stuff. We kept the majority of it. And we ended up, we hired Fane Wright. Was that in December? November, December, we were here.
December, yeah.
Yep. For crushing that material. And we end up with a material, we got about 15,000 yards of processed aggregate base, which took all their old catch basin tops, rock, some old pieces of granite, things like that and gravel and just dirt material and created a whole new process. So instead of going and buying it from Tilcon or Coloso or somebody or Duning, we have this material now that we have, we've paid for it multiple times over. And now we can reuse it behind the catch basins and a pothole, things like that. So it really, that 15,000 yards is going to scope longer than my career.
Oh, great. Well, thank you for everything. Again, I know I said it before at the other meeting. So thanks for looking and looking forward to thinking to saving us money.
I just have one question for the uninitiated. For the catch basins and the material that you're talking about, this is to fill potholes?
Underneath, not the blacktop itself.
Okay.
Goes underneath. Basically, some of these bottles we have to cut out, pull the old bad material out. Put that new, that material that we just created in and then pave over that.
Okay, got it.
One of the things that Russ also is, another duty, is that, as many of you know, that we have a really very good relationship with the school system and we're all a big team. And Russ is going to be very involved, and he has been very involved, in watching the school project too and the construction of it. And he's now been attending quite a few of the design meetings. And it's great that being a local person, he has quite a bit of knowledge about the site and what has gone on. And, you know, it's, it's really quite a benefit that we have someone that is going to help us and watch, watch the, one of the biggest project that we've ever done in town. So that's another thing that's going to be taking up some of your time.
So going from our free, previous biggest project, you're stepping into the new biggest project.
Roll around.
There's always something new. No, it's great. You, you've been around and you've been in town your whole life. You've been around watching all this going on. So that's got to be a tremendous help to the architects, the builders, everyone who's looking at the ground. And you can tell them exactly what's really underneath there.
I don't know if they consider it a help.
They might not see it that way, but certainly from our side, it's a big help.
You gotta say, like, Russ is like the acorn that's grown into that big, huge oak tree.
Gold acorn, as you will.
You're welcome, sir.
Russ, thank you, thank you for this. And to your point, you've given us a tight budget. And I know this is a small item, but I see the gas and diesel fuel accounts reflects usage in current pricing. And I'm wondering if that was written prior to the last two weeks. And not knowing what's going on in the future, I want to make sure that you're comfortable for what we have there.
No. I, I would say, you know, again, we, this budget was completed before. And so I think all our gas and utilities are something, you know, when we were going to talk later, but it's a good point now.
We might need to consider.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't want you to be caught in a tough spot.
I have a few roads that we won't plow with no diesel, so.
Our roads are always the first to go. If you're not plowing, first you skip all the council's roads. Do everyone else's first. Then you get back to us later.
You don't want to be complaints on your own roads.
I don't get them because you do a nice job.
No, that's a very good point, though. It's probably something that, you know, as time goes into April and some different things.
It's not just here, but I figured I'd bring it up.
Right, no, absolutely. As I've always said to you guys, the Public Works doesn't have like the Friends of the Public Works, like they have the Friends of the Library, the Friends of the School, everything. But really, you're the pulse of what goes on here in Farmington, the Public Works Department.
Yeah, we don't want anyone breaking down like, like trunks, like the, the tanks in the Ukraine.
Yeah, no.
Well, it's, it's one of those departments that when you don't hear anything, that's a good thing. Because people are very quick to complain if something doesn't get done.
Yeah, we don't have the friends. We have other.
Right, you get the other side. Any other questions for Russ?
None, no.
Okay.
I'm going to do it next. So we'll have a TA from 43 to 54.
Yes, I'd like to make the motion to temporarily approve pages 43 to 54 of the town budget.
Second?
Have a motion and second. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing in.
If we could go to page, that building, oh, fire. That's 42 is Public Works. That's not right. Hold on one second. Do you have the page? We'll go to. Page 26. Page 26 is the Fire Marshal account. One of the things that I always like to highlight in the Fire Marshal's account is the hydrant charges. And that's on page 26, the last item. And that is our, which we pay to the various water companies. We pay a maintenance fee to provide water service to the town. Hydrant fees are essentially a utility that the town does not have any control over. And those, the increases are, are large. And as you can see, we're paying $1,112,000 to the various utility companies. So this is a, this is a big line item in our budget. Other than that, in the Fire Marshal account, that was going to, from a full-time, I mean, from a part-time to a full-time secretary. And that shows in the narrative too, in this account.
Questions on the Fire Marshal?
For page number 26, yes, I'd like to temporarily approve page 26 of the town manager's budget.
Second?
Have a motion and second. Any additional questions?
42.
None, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing in.
Our next one is if you could go to page 42. And that's the Building depart, Building Inspector Department. And as you can see here, the total from current to proposed is, we're adding one position. And it's really, again, the way that everything is slotted out, it's, it's a half.
Any questions for this Building Inspector pages?
Just a comment. From my experiences in my business and dealing with the town hall and the amount of staffing they have, especially at the Building Department, we are definitely under a lot of towns that we deal with. They've definitely keep, kept it lean and, and provided the service at the same time.
Great, thank you. Other questions or comments? Have a motion and second, Joseph.
I will make the motion for, to accept page number 42 of the town manager's budget.
Second?
We have a motion and second. Any additional comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing in.
I think the next page is 18. 18, 19, and 20. And that is the Planning Department. And we talked about the staffing. We went from 3.5 to 4. And other than that, in the Planning Department, like I, we talked about earlier, we're very pleased. Our new Assistant Town Planner seems to be working out really well. Shannon's doing a spectacular job for us. Things have really, seems to have stabled out for us. So we're pleased about that. And it's very, very busy.
That's good, too.
Yeah.
Questions or comments on the Planning Department?
Yep. Just one quick question on page 19. On, under contractual services, I noticed the department request was 10,000, but you're putting in zero. Is there a reason for that?
So remind me what that was.
As you know, there's a couple of lawsuits out there. And so the department requested money for legal fees, that's the $10,000. And we traditionally are customers to budget all our legal fees in the town attorney account. So we'll pay for the legal fees out of the town attorney's account, not out of here. So.
Got it. So just moving it to this different account, basically, yeah. I was just going to make a comment on the town planner. Coming from planning and zoning before coming here, in just two years, we had three different town planners. Shannon was always the, the most stable piece of that entire department. And having her as the full-time planner now, I think is a real benefit to the town.
Any other comments for Pining?
I'd like to make the motion to, to temporarily approve pages 18 through 20 of the town manager's budget.
Second?
Motion and second. Any additional comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing in.
Do we have one more? Oh, refuse. The brown tab in the back. Stop it. You thought it first before I said anything.
That should be more WPCA.
Oh, that's where I was.
So as you can see on this account, the revenues match the appropriations. And what this is, is that this is, the budget includes the cost of collecting and disposing of solid, bulky, and hazardous waste generated by town residents and the town's landfill operation. This proposes a rate increase of $18. The annual fee will be $272 per household. There's definitely a lot going on in the garbage world right now. And so will be more to come on that. Russ has been doing some investigation about, you know, I'm sure many of you heard about Mira and what's going on with that. So we are on top of that. But right now, we think that we'd be able to keep our rate at 272 per household. And, but like I said, there is a lot going on in the garbage world and where people are, with the Mira plant and where people are going to dispose of their garbage, our contractor, so.
I just had a quick question about that. What's the timeline for the closing of the plant? Like, how much time do we have before we have to find an alternate place? What? Three months. Three months. Okay.
We will probably be back in front of you with a recommendation to change, potentially change. We got to talk about it amongst ourselves. That is a little bit more based on, you know, numbers and a lot of varying factors that are going to go into this. This has been going on for probably two and a half, three years now. So we are going to, it's going to move quickly at this point. We've been waiting on information back from Mira and we finally received that last release.
So it's really a basic if we're going to continue with Mira and sign a contract with them or go with someone else. And so we have to make that decision relatively quick. So I would anticipate if it's not at the next meeting, it would definitely be at the next, the, the meeting after that we'll be making a recommendation to you all about that.
Okay. And then looking long-term, are there things that as a town, we should be, like, educating our residents? Because if you don't have that, well, if you could reduce the amount of garbage that you have to get rid of, theoretically, you should be able to save a couple of bucks because you're not paying. theoretically, you should be able to save a couple of bucks because you're not paying for as much. Just in terms of like, you know, ten years from now, if we could get, I don't know, an eighth of a percent lower in terms of what we put out?
Yeah, actually, in the garbage world, saving is the worst thing you can do to save money. Because you need, you need garbage to, especially now with the plant closing, garbage will be shipped out of state. And, you know, the cost of shipping garbage, for some reason, declines the more garbage you ship. So they're actually looking for commitments as to the less you want to ship, or you're planning on shipping, the higher the rate becomes. So.
So there's an incentive for you to actually ship out more garbage? Okay.
And we have to talk about this more, the possibility of switching, you know, who disposes of our trash, we can get more into it. But there isn't, there's not economies of scale. It's the more trash. And, and actually, it's worked that way all along. I mean, it's not, this is not something new. Your existing agreement with Mira, or the old CRRA, actually had minimum requirements. You've had to actually bring certain tonnage amounts there, otherwise you could be penalized. So, and that's been longstanding for the past twenty or thirty years. Even burn facilities, you need a certain amount of trash to burn a facility in order to generate electricity or whatever, to make it worthwhile doing that. So there's two competing concepts going on there. One, you need trash, two, we're trying to reduce the trash you bring, the waste you bring.
Okay. Yeah, I don't want to take up your time. I know we're talking about dollars and cents right now in the budget, but yeah, we'll have a, I look forward to our discussion.
But there is, but just quickly, though, that obviously that, that's the financial end of it, but there's also the environmental end of it. And, you know, I think our Green Efforts Committee has been looking at some different things. And we've been attending quite a few meetings with the DEP. And there's different things being thrown out there for pay for your own garbage bags and some various different things to help lower the, have less garbage, which is the opposite of the financial end, but it's the environmental end of things. And I know, I think that Shannon and I were talking a little bit about composting and some various different things, that there's a whole list that we want to try to do. And I think the Green Efforts Committee is going to be reviewing some of those different items as we go forward.
One thing to note, too, since we switched to the automated carts back in '08, recycling in '11, our waste has reduced consistently down. And we're leveling off now. So I think, as you said, educate residents more. We put stuff out every year, typically in the annual newsletter and spring and fall, or I forget when it, whenever they go live, it's summer, whatever it is. And it's, we're at the point now with, part of the problem is single stream, you know, and people aren't going to like this, but it's a great fancy word. But it ruins a lot of the recycling, because if you put your pizza box in there, the whole thing goes to the garbage.
Yeah.
Goes to waste because you can't recycle the greasy cardboard that's in there. So, and it's just habit, like it's cardboard, it's got to be recyclable. But when it goes as a single stream, it's very tough to sort all that stuff. And they pick things out, and once they see a load has those co-mingles in there, it just goes to the bulk, to the waste side. So, single stream has its benefits of rapid or, you know, quicker collection. But going back to the day when the truck would come around and separate, source separate at your curb side, and you separate your green glass, your clear glass, and your paper goods. Everything, it's, it costs more, but it was more efficient, and you got more out of it. Today, there's nowhere to bring these recyclables. China doesn't take them, and it's very difficult to get rid of them. So you're, they're still charging us zero dollars for the recyclables, but we're paying more in the garbage. And for, as Joe said, the less garbage you give, the higher you pay. But you still got to have the garbage. There's other programs that the DEP is looking at for like an extended producer responsibility to change the packaging of items or package. When you order stuff from Amazon and, you know, you order a box of pens and it comes in a box ten times the size, one of those things is to make them change their packaging, plus take, you know, that cardboard back. In my opinion, it's just if you're paying for it to be delivered, regardless of the size of the package, then they got to send a truck back around to pick up the cardboard that they delivered it in, you're going to pay more for the product. So there's ups and downs to every thing that you do. And I think a lot of it just comes down to how much you personally understand and recycle and have time to do it. How many people, recycling cans are overtopped after a couple days? Well, you got to break down your boxes. You got to separate things out. You got to make sure it will fit. And my kids would give me a hard time because I'm out there slicing my boxes up and making them fit in their can. And, you know, because other people, you know, you see boxes and they just throw a full box in it. But we can educate as much as we can, but getting people to actually do that, that's the difficult part of it because of people's time. That's the ups and downs of recycling in about thirty seconds.
Garbage.
That's okay. We have the Green Efforts Committee. The chair is sitting right next to me. He's going to go around right before Collection Day. You know, big stick, talk quietly, make sure that those boxes are broken down.
The other thing, too, like, to go, like Kathy mentioned, that page you throw by your, you know, buy bags, the thought process is instead of paying three cents a bag when you go to the large department stores and buy a box of garbage bags, you would buy a bag from the town for a dollar or whatever, fifty cents or a dollar a bag. The thought process is you would use that sparingly, recycle more, force recycling. Well, again, how many, what's the time and effort you're going to take to do all that? You're still producing, you're not going to change your food habits. You're going to buy the same food that you're buying. It's just a matter of how many times you're going to fill that bag up. Then what happens when the bag is, you know, if I don't use that, that certain colored bag, you're going to, we're going to have to have garbage police going around every route every day.
Big stick.
And it's just, it creates another, you know, cost to the system. So there's things that, you know, are really going to have to be ironed out.
Balance. It's a balance.
It's difficult. I don't think, you know, people's taxes, you know, are going to go up and double it just because of the amount of personnel you may need when you go to that system. And the chances, they say that people don't illegally dump and drop their stuff off, you know, elsewhere in town at different dumpsters and outside the dumpsters. I truly think that that's going to happen and we're going to see an increase. One thing I think that helps us is our bulky waste pickup. Happened that twice a year, or even when we had it, when we went back and we had it, you call for your bulky waste to help people out from being more convenient. We still get some illegal dumpings here and there, but they're few and far between. The frequency is way down.
It's well worth the money to do the bulky waste.
Yeah.
It is from that standpoint, because now I got to send two guys with a truck, then we're taking it and we're paying it, you know, the additional week. It's just, we're silent, we're always there, so it is what it is. It's just a good, a good point with the bulky waste.
Other questions on the wastes? Okay, Joe?
Kathy's at sixty-nine to seventy-one.
Sixty-nine through seventy-one.
Make a motion to temporarily approve pages sixty-nine through seventy-one of the town manager's budget.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Any further comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passing out.
Is that it for Russ? Thank you, Russ.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good night.
Thanks, Russ.
You, too. You want to go do, do Nancy? I think we'll do Nancy, we'll do you next, and then we'll do, yeah.
And Nancy is... Everyone knows Nancy Perrin, our Director of Community Recreation.
Oh, no. Oh, no. You all right?
It's the mustard tab. Nancy's pages are, pages fifty-five through sixty-five, and it's Community and Recreational Services. She has a, a small increase in the budget, three point one one percent. One of the things to note here is that a few years back, Nancy had recommended that we take on Dial-A-Ride, the service in-house. In the past, we had contracted it out, and Nancy felt strongly that we could do it more efficiently and save money. And it actually, it really worked, and we are, it worked really well. And so now we have our own Dial-A-Ride drivers, and we contract out a small portion, which is the answering of the phones. Is that how it works? And, but the program is doing really, really well. But we've had part-time workers that are our Dial-A-Ride drivers. And Nancy has recommended that we restructure how we are, do, operate the service. And she would like to make a part-time driver into a full-time driver. And it works easier logistically for a lot of different reasons, because you can't work a certain amount of hours when you're part-time, how you have to move people around, various factors that go along with it. So I think it was a good idea to go to a part-time, from a part-time to a full-time person. The other thing that's kind of neat in the Dial-A-Ride is that you've changed up a little bit the service of the big vans all the time. And the, as you know, is that you call and the Dial-A-Ride van comes and picks you up and it takes you to various parts. But now, I think some of it was related to COVID, but we've also realized that some of it works better, that maybe not having such the big van come, and it's a smaller vehicle, and it takes fewer people to various things. And then you're not paying as much for the gas and some things that go along. So I think your, one of your vehicles now is going to be a smaller vehicle, right, for the Dial-A-Ride? So the whole service, it's a really, people love the Dial-A-Ride service. It's something that's new, and Nancy's been expanding it and doing it better. And I think it's been a very big successful story for us.
Great asset to the town.
What was that?
It's a great asset to the town.
Yeah. And Nancy's area, you know, she's over at the Staples House, but they do a ton of different things for us. And Nancy, I thought maybe you could just, just highlight a couple of things for us. Because sometimes, again, people don't really realize what goes on in your department.
Well, really, just kind of coming off COVID, we're, we're working on just kind of rebuilding how we do some of our programs. Senior Center, seniors are so thrilled to be out of the house and to be interacting. And just the way we're running the programs, we're, all of our programs are getting built up really fast. We're also reaching out to folks who may still not feel comfortable to, to come out. We have a group of about fifteen hundred people that we check in, you know, each month with. We have volunteers through a few different places. Those are also the same people that helped us register folks for vaccines as well as, you know, boosters and things like that. Youth Services, we've been working really hard. We've had quite a large number of juvenile review board cases, which is the juvenile justice program for kids under a certain age. And just doing a lot more counseling with anxiety and things of that nature. So all areas have been really busy. On the onset of COVID, we were really working on a lot of financial factors with folks that, you know, being, not working and things of that nature. Now that's not so much the case, it's working on more a lot of the mental health services. And, you know, unfortunately, a lot of rebound on that. So, you know, all our different committees have really been focusing on that.
And then Nancy also runs the recreation side of Farmington and the golf course. And that is very stable. I think we have our, our programs. And the golf course over the last couple of years during COVID was really, really busy. And it stabilized a little bit, but we're not a hundred percent sure because the weather last summer was really not very good. So we're still hoping that to get back up to maybe those COVID numbers, but the golf.
Last summer, I think we had seven weekends that were complete busts, so it was hard to tell.
If, but the golf course had been really very, very busy and very creative with a lot of your different programs that you guys have done during COVID. And really, because people, as you all know, were dying to have any kind of activity. So especially anything that they could do outside during COVID, but I think we're pretty much back to normal.
Yep, and planning our summer concerts, and we moved them over here because at the gazebo, it was hard to keep people socially distanced. I mean, we had one concert, I think we counted seven hundred and twenty-five people that came, so.
How many?
Yeah. And that land actually takes on a lot of people. It doesn't feel as big as it is. But then managing the Dial-A-Ride, we're able to go pick up all the seniors to bring them there when it wasn't our service. We couldn't do some of those things. So we were really made for the networking and the community to kind of come alive, which has been really good.
That's great.
And Nancy was very creative with those concerts. They had the circles all drawn out. They had, everyone had their pod. So, but we're, we're happy we're back to, getting back to normal.
Yeah. And we do a lot of collaboration. I mean, we have the cert truck comes to every one of our concerts. We used to do food trucks, but now, you know, they're committed to coming to every one of our concerts. And, you know, we've used them in different places. We use both the Fire Department and the Police Department for our holiday giving programs. And, you know, doing that sort of thing. So we really try to collaborate with every department and every organization in town to be able to provide our service. And we couldn't do it without them, no doubt.
Nancy, you weren't here, but we showed it, your little video at, I think, the last council meeting, which was really kind of cool, just showing a lot of the different things that you guys do.
The breadth of how much you cover throughout town and the people that you touch throughout was just very impressive to see.
Fixability.
Right. And then one thing that, because you had such a good contact list and you do check, it really helped out during COVID when you had to get the people vaccinated and you knew who to call and who to go to. And you guys really rolled out quite a vaccine program.
Yeah, and the, the Health Department had told us that we had scheduled all ours for our Farmington. We were up to, anybody over the age of seventy-five, I think it was ninety-eight percent had scheduled. So, and that was due to the great volunteers that we had that helped us with that.
Yep.
So, so Nancy is page fifty-five through sixty-five. I don't know if anyone has any questions on any of her.
Nancy, you mentioned the youth program for when they get in trouble. Are we looking to bring in more counseling for them? Because obviously you're seeing a lot of more, we're looking for different intervention programs or such to try to help.
Absolutely. And we have one full-time counselor. We also have an additional counselor who's paid through, through a variety of grants. And we keep, you know, every couple of months, I tell Joe, we've got a few more things for Chris to do. So we, any grant that we can get to help support and use positive youth development in our community, I will go after immediately because I think that's critical and important.
Thank you.
Other questions for Nancy? Just again, thank you through the pandemic. Yes, you were incredibly creative. You continued to keep people engaged, and you did a great job of reaching out to the people who couldn't get out. I mean, the shut-ins and the people who are our most at-risk population. You were, you were the contact there, so thank you for all the work you did there.
Yeah, exactly. I'd like to echo that also, especially, you know, for the services you provide for them, they can go out shopping. To make sure that you had someone going out, providing their, you know, their list of groceries, getting it to them, so.
You were one of our good volunteers, Joe.
And the golf course was the first thing open, so.
It was.
That was fun to watch people actually showing up early on. One person per golf cart doing everything to keep them safe, so.
All right, like, make a motion to temporarily approve pages fifty-five through sixty-five of the town manager's budget.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing out.
All right, the next one would be the rec fund, which is pages seventy-two through seventy-nine. The red tab.
So this is our recreation fund. This is the fund that's separate from the operating budget. As you can see here, our revenues are six hundred and eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars, and our appropriations match. And these are all our recreation programs, our bus trips, our camps, and the office administration. So right now, we do have a balanced budget. I don't know if you have any questions on the rec fund?
Rec fund questions, anyone?
The sports and physical fitness, does that count for the new equipment going into the senior center?
Uh, no, that's in the senior center.
Thank you.
These are the fees that you get for, you know, the playing the basketball programs, the soccer programs, those types of things.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Joe?
I'd like to make a motion to temporarily accept pages seventy-two through seventy-nine of the town manager's budget.
Second.
Motion of second. Any further comments? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing out.
Uh, the next one is the nice blue tab at the end, the recre, uh, Westwood's Fund. And that would be pages eighty through eighty-three. The first page is the, the revenues and the appropriations. As you can see, our revenue's total six hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred, and our appropriations match, where our appropriations, our revenues are from the greens fees, the season tickets, the golf cart rentals, the driving range, and interest in small for the other. And our appropriations that are going out are the clubhouse, the restaurant, the driving range, and the golf cart rentals.
Questions on the golf course fund? Questions on the golf course fund?
Can I ask? So I see the appropriation for restaurant, but I don't see money generated by the restaurant up top, unless I'm just missing it? Or where is that slotted in?
The restaurant, we have to contract out for. So we just have a small budget just for the supplies and things of that nature. But we, we contract out for that.
Okay.
And they do pay us a rental fee for that contract, but that's the only revenue that we get.
Okay.
And we did a, didn't we do like a little rehab in there too?
We did. Much needed too.
Do we get, do we get any information on what, you know, how well-attended that is? Like, is that a popular place to be right now?
The golf course or the restaurant?
The, the, like, you know, you know, the 19th hole, you know, people are finishing up. Like, is that still a popular?
I think, I think with the rehab of it, the restaurant has not, is not, I wouldn't consider it like-
No, I've been, I, I've been, I've frequent-
Isn't that a destination?
Quote-unquote restaurant. As someone who, like, I literally own a restaurant, yeah, it's a restaurant in quotes, yeah.
Right. But one of the things that we are thinking about is that we, the golf course, now that it's, it's basically stabilized, and we've had some good years with COVID, putting some money, like, the restaurant was done, the back deck needs some work to it, some different things.
You know, not, just that area of town particularly having something that's, you know, even if you're not golfing, to be able to go and meet a couple of people for a happy hour would be great if that was, you know.
We're actually going to be doing a few concerts there.
That'd be great, yeah.
Just like acoustic guitar, just on a few of the nights to encourage people after they, if they've been in a league or if not, just to go there.
Yeah, I think it's something, you know, and I know Westwood's a smaller course, but I think of something like, like Hawks Landing has like a really nice outside seating area where people can go just in, even if you're not golfing, just to hang out. They do trivia nights there and things like that, just a thought.
Yeah, no, it's, it's something, we've struggled with the restaurant for many years, but we do have someone in there now for, has been making investments. And we hope that, you know, with doing the outside deck and doing some different things to try to get some more people, because it's beautiful sitting out there.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, it's really-
A sunset, like, on the evening back there, it really is a nice area to be.
Yeah, no, it really is. And we're hoping, you know, the little programming might bring in others who might never think of going there.
Okay.
Good. Like to make the motion to temporarily approve pages 80 through 83 of the town manager's budget.
Second.
Have a motion to second. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Yep, thank you. Good luck with your back.
Thank you.
Um, I think we have next, the police and fire. I think we have Chief Malanson here. Yes, we do. Comes first, the police and fire. Hello, chief. Yeah, we'll do that first.
Twenty-seven through thirty.
I think we'll do fire first. So the fire department is pages 27 through 30. And that's under the public safety account. So fire, fire department, 27 through 30. All right. Fire department budget is very, very flat. 1.37% increase, really a status quo type of budget. I don't know if there's really anything to highlight. Let me see what I wrote. No, I don't know if you have any questions, but really just a very flat budget.
Any questions for the flat fire budget? Seeing none.
Like to make the motion to temporarily approve pages 27 through 30 of the town manager's budget.
Second.
Have a motion to second. Any further comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
The next one is-
Did Steve Hoffman ever have that easy?
It's all the leadership there. By the way, is your camera on right now?
1.37. You come in at that, 1.37, you get, that's what happens. The next is the police department, which is 31 through 39. Police department is another very flat budget at a 1.59% budget increase. And, oh, yeah, yeah, she does. So very flat budget. One of the things, though, that helped the budget a little bit on the police department's side is that, if you remember last year, some of you, is that we did have quite a few items, new items for the police accountability bill. Those items are now built into the budget, so that they're, they're there. Or some of them, we didn't have to spend again. So we were able to see some savings because of that. There's really, it's a pretty flat budget. The only thing that I would say is that the chief has, and he has typically for the last couple of years, have asked for more employees for the police department. We really are on a situation, a lot of it has to do with that, when you have to go and, when you become a police officer, you have to train for how many?
The training is six months in the academy and then another four months with a field training officer. So your 10 months, that's once you've hired. And the hiring process normally takes three to four months between a written test and then after that, right, once we select somebody, written, physical, all that, then there's a polygraph, psych, background, et cetera, et cetera. So it's over a year. So when somebody notifies us they're retiring, to fill that person's role in the schedule takes over a year. And so that's the struggle that we've kind of, and so, and we have obviously, I don't want to say, we, there, there are no, there's no, there's no fluff, there's no bumpers in any of the schedules. So basically, when an officer is off, we have to fill his role with overtime. And so, you know, it's not like I can take somebody and then put them in that role and that sort of thing when somebody's gone. So that's why, you know, it's, but, but we do very well at retaining employees, which other police departments have not been doing. And we've also done pretty well in this last year, hiring certified officers who have been, we have one who has about three years and one who has about five years coming on. And so for them, the training is much less. It's only about two months. So we were able to get them basically right out, you know, onto the street quickly, much more quick than obviously having to send somebody three at.
And one of the things, Johnny, you said earlier about the building department, I think just, you know, throughout all the town services, we're very light on employees. And so the police department's that very fine line about, you know, you need more people, but getting one new person really won't help that much because of how it works. And, you know, we're very light, but that's kind of how we roll here. And, you know, I think that at this point in time, based on your budget target and things of that nature, we didn't put in any of the extra people. But I think it's fair to let you know that the chief has been putting, requesting employees. And actually, to be fair, a lot of the other departments have requested more employees too, which were cut out of the budget. So, that I did based on your target.
Chief, are your retention rates, besides you being the chief there, that people want to stay, is it pensions keeping them? Is it anything that you could sort of feel out? Because I know, like, Burl and other places have, you know, 401Ks or this or that. Is the pension a main driver to keep some of people longer?
So we, we, the two officers we got came from a non-pensioned place. I think that helps. I mean, working for the best town manager in Connecticut, obviously doesn't hurt. But the, but the pension, obviously, and having good, but it's, it really, when it comes down to it, having a good work environment. And, you know, this last time, those two certified officers, we kind of, we, we asked our officers to go out and find, they had to recommend somebody. And so with that, as you know, if you ever recommended somebody for a job where you work, you own that person. So they have to be good people. So we knew, number one, we'd get good people, but also, they were actively recruiting, so talking very positive about the agency. And so they brought in some people from, from agencies that didn't quite have, you know, the, the, you know, were, the respect of the community, the, I mean, there's a lot of things that going into being a police officer in a community. And I think all of them play a part in keeping them, including, you know, the pension, the pay, the benefits. You have to be competitive to get the best and keep them. So we've been doing very well at that.
Do you find, when you've had instances where you've had officers that need to cover, you know, if you say you have somebody retire and you're in that, that hiring process and it's over a year, does, is there, can there be a morale issue if people are working too much overtime? Can you speak to that? Or is it something that's not really been an issue for us?
Yeah, no, it, there definitely can be. And actually, the town manager really keeps a pulse on that. And with me. And so this last time, when our officer was injured, we were allowed to bring on another officer because we were going to be down, because, don't forget, now, you know, we have officers out, long-term injury, they're having shoulder surgery. Well, they cannot come back to work. It's not like I can have them sit there and, and write reports or whatever. They, they can't go out on the road. And so that impacts it. And so we do keep a, what we call it, order-ins. And so we do keep a very good watch on that. And if, any of you are following, I was just talking to a father of a Hartford officer who was talking about how bad it is that his son basically has no time off. Like, he gets ordered in, he has to beg for a day off, like, and they get held over. And so morale really takes an impact.
This might not be something that you guys necessarily have, but do you, do you keep track of overtime hours that are necessary because of, you know, annually, things like this happen, injured officers or early retirees or things like that? So we can kind of quantify, we've used X amount of overtime per week and we're spending this for that. And if we brought in a new full-time person, it would be less because it's not an overtime rate, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, I know exactly what you're saying. So there's, there's a, we do. That's the answer to that ques-, simple question is, is we do.
And are we over that line, where we are essentially an overtime bang? Yeah, okay.
No.
No. But one of the things that the chief and I talk about often, and it's interesting with the collective bargaining, and, and you're young, is that it's really a very, very different mentality with the younger people that are coming in all throughout the whole town about this whole overtime. The chief always tells me that when he was in the rank and file as a police officer, everyone wanted the overtime.
People want their free time now. It's the same thing with staff that I, you know.
Yeah, you couldn't get enough. And now, everything's about the time. It's not about the overtime. And it's, we have to, I think we had talked about it on one of the collective bargaining, that we had to change things over because everyone wants the time. And before, that wasn't, that wasn't the case at all. And so, you know, so it's a whole different mentality and a balancing act-
Right.
-of how, how to do it.
Okay.
And one last question, how are we doing with our specialized program, our statewide guy?
Phenomenal.
Yeah. I've heard things here and there. I know it was, you know, a couple, when we attended your meeting a couple of months ago, you had a lot of great information, a lot of positive impact.
It, it has been. So he's talking about, we've assigned an officer to the Greater Hartford Auto Theft Task Force. It's a full-time assignment. And they have been, well, how many phone calls have you gotten from stolen cars and in the last two months? We had one stolen car last month compared to, previous to that, we were up in the, like, 12, even more. But it's not just that. They're getting, people who have committed carjackings, armed robberies, and they're all in stolen cars, catalytic converter thefts, we had five of them. Through his resources and his task force, they've identified who did the Farmington ones. And they were applying for arrest warrants right now. Now, they've also done them all over the place. And an interesting, I don't know if any of you have, Newington had a car come in and in the school parking lot at Newington High School, they cut some catalytic converters out of some cars during school time. Our officer, because he's on this task force, knew about it right away, sent it to our officers. That car then came to Farmington High School, where then they took off on our guys and, you know, we didn't pursue it at that time because they have unmarked cars, we talked about this. So they follow cars until they stop to figure out where they're going. And then the next time they do something, they wait in front of the house, they come back to that location, they jump out and they grab them. So, but they've been involved in a lot of, I have a whole, I forwarded it to you, on Tuesday, we got the, the monthly summary, which is how many arrests they made, how many search warrants and arrest warrants, and it's phenomenal, the amount of work. And, and really, the, the debt they're putting in. He knows everybody by their first and last name that are doing these things, and it's the same kind of, we'll say, you know, the same crooks all the time. And it's, you know, groups, different groups, and so, but it's been, thanks for the question, it's been very, very, we were going to take him out in January, but I'm going to be, the amount of work that they're doing, this group, has just been, until we see those numbers starting to come down, and so we talk about it frequently, and, you know, when that time is.
So he sort of moved in from, you know, they, they evolved into a more of a violent crime task force instead of just being strictly auto theft task force.
Well, what's happening, it's all tied in.
Right. But you could say, like, there is coverage of almost everything. They're not just, now we're not going to do that, have a good day.
Right.
So that's great.
We're really pleased with the officer who's doing, it's on the task force too, who's doing a really great job.
Yeah, I mean, there were, up in the Highlands, there was a stolen car that crashed and three people took off, and there were guns involved, et cetera. He, with one call, had eight unmarked cars here, you know what I mean? Because their whole task force came. And, and they knew the players right away, they knew the car, they knew where else they'd been, and they caught all three. Like, that's what you get when you're involved in these. So it's kind of a force multiplier when you have an incident.
Rafina.
Does anyone have any other questions?
Yep.
I'm sorry.
I have one. I was noticing that there's funding for three 24-hour patrol vehicles. Does that mean that patrol are, you're stepping up patrols?
No, that's a replacement plan. So we replace, those are the 24/7 district cars, the cars you see every day driving around. And we have a replacement plan where we do probably three a year. They put on, I think it's about 50,000 miles a year, because they're used 24 hours a day, seven days a week, patrolling. So they, they, they get to be very high mileage. Once they're at a certain mileage, we push them down to maybe the school officers in different divisions. And usually, they have, the, the newer cars always go to patrol because they're the, you know, they're the front lines that need to make sure they have reliable vehicles all the time.
Thank you.
I think the other thing to emphasize also, when you're talking about the cars, is they're hard miles too. I mean, because you're not, you're not getting that nice highway miles when you're-
Usually some fast starts and stops, but what they talk about with police vehicles also is that they're running almost 24 hours a day. So you don't capture that in mileage. So a lot of places go to hour meters, which would be unbelievable because they're actually running 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
And, go ahead, Ed.
Ed?
Yep. I have a question on page 33. The line item, community programs, so I noticed our estimate for 2021, 2022 is $13,580, and we're only budgeting $2,400 this year. And looking at what community, community programs account is covering, you know, crime prevention programs, high school KNA8 programs, women's personal safety class, and police explorers, all sounds like really good stuff. Is, is what we're budgeting here enough that we're not cutting back those programs?
So what that was, that was a part of the police accountability bill where we had to bring in trainers for the diversity training. And so that was very specific to that year. So it went up substantially to bring that training in. And then that training is actually being completed as we speak, the different modules of it. And so in the, we won't need that in coming years. Then we'll be able to just get that through normal training.
So the number here is, yeah, is enough for-
Yeah. Yeah. So, yeah, so those programs are actually, they don't cost that much to, right? It's mostly the officer's time. So, but, but that, that bump that we had there was specifically for diversity training and to bring trainers in.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Other questions?
So.
There is something else you wanted to bring up?
Yes. So one of the things that on your budget target, we talked about really trying to limit the new services. And one of the things that the chief and I have been talking about quite a bit, and we thought maybe the town council would consider, and we're going to watch a little video, and because we don't have a new person in the budget, that potentially we could have a new officer. But if we can watch the video.
I have been warned that we may need to watch an ad for our place.
pledge and I will peacefully and impartially discharge the powers and duties of my position as.
Canine Officer.
At Southern Connecticut State University, Officer Jules was sworn in as a working service dog with Sergeant Torres of the Southern Police Department. They join the growing number of community policing dogs at various Connecticut police departments, trained by puppies behind bars. Eight in all, including Chase, Indy, Heidi, Bear, Addison, Hodges, and Skipper. The family tree is growing too. Bear and Chase are brother and sister, and Hodges, Skipper, and Jules are all brothers. Puppies Behind Bars, PBB, trains prison inmates to raise service dogs for wounded war veterans and first responders, police departments, as well as explosive detection canines for law enforcement.
Congratulations.
Sergeant Cynthia Torres has been a part of the Southern Police Department for 17 years and a police officer for 23 years. Having Officer Jules by her side is very special. She says he's added a whole new dimension to her life as an officer.
Words can't describe it. I, it was absolutely amazing. It was so nice to officially welcome him to the Southern Police Department. Although he's been here for a few weeks, there's, um, something extra special about the swearing-in ceremony for any police officer.
Everyone on campus is excited for Officer Jules, including Southern Connecticut State University President Bertolino.
Well, I think Officer Jules has already brought a great deal of joy and enthusiasm to the campus. Um, as we talked about earlier today, it's really an opportunity, I think, for individuals to feel comfort and have a comfort level with our law enforcement in a way that perhaps they may not otherwise have had. But, um, very popular member of our community. There's no doubt about it.
And just how does Chief Dooley of Southern Police Department feel about Officer Jules?
Well, as I keep saying, lots of smiles. Uh, the swearing-in today was very special, uh, embraced by the community, the entire Southern community and our law enforcement partners in this area. And we're just really proud.
Even Southern student Katie was thrilled to be here today.
Jules is a great dog. We had a great day and it was a great swearing-in. And we got, made him cookies.
Officer Jules is certified for many things from officer wellness, community engagement, and something very unique.
He assists with, um, survivors of violence, so victims. Um, he'll stay in the room when they're giving statements.
Congratulations, Officer Jules and Sergeant Torres, Southern Connecticut State University Police Department. It was a great swearing-in. And one of the other responsibilities for Jules is dates. Play dates. Are you guys ready? Let's have some fun.
For Channel 3 Eyewitness News, I'm Renee Dino.
We do have a new off, we have a police dog, and that dog is a police dog. This is, these kinds of dogs are called comfort dogs. And Paul has had quite a few requests from some of the officers, and he's talked to some of the different chiefs. And it's not very expensive. It's about $8,000, um, to get a comfort dog. And maybe you can talk about what you would see the comfort dog doing and some of the benefits to it.
So the, the comfort dog would be for, so I can tell you that we've already used it twice, um, uh, for our officers. We, yeah, we've, we've borrowed one. We've had a comfort dog come. Um, and twice were for juvenile sex assault victims. Um, and they just felt much more comfortable talking to the detectives with having that dog. It just breaks a barrier, makes them feel more comfortable. Um, and it actually was a phenomenal, um, tool that the detectives thought of, especially when they had young victims of, uh, sex violence. So, um, that was one part. And then the other part is when officers, we do debriefings, uh, mental health and stress for police officers, um, has become, has been put on the forefront. It was one of the, the pillars, uh, President Obama's 21st pillar, um, about the mental health and stress. And so these comfort dogs, service dogs are around and kind of assist with that too. Like when we do a debriefing and that sort of thing. It would be used in schools. It would be used in senior centers. It would be used all over the place. Um, obviously that dog would be, would have a handler who would be a police officer, and it allows you to be approachable. So it was interesting. We had an intern in today and we were talking about this dog. And the intern is from University of Connecticut. And so we were talking about the dog and she knew the Yukon dog. She's like, we love that dog. So it was kind of interesting that, you know, I just happened to be talking to an officer about this and that sort of thing. And she right away knew about, knew the dog's name, et cetera. So it allows police, and if you think about the last several years policing, some of the images in the national media that have been sent, it really allows a different, um, kind of optic for our police department, um, where you're approachable, but it also has a positive impact. Um, we had Canine Drac who was very good in the schools. I mean, um, we used to laugh that during the parades, everybody, you, we, we didn't even have to be there because everybody was looking at Canine Drac. All the kids knew him. They all fed him. They loved him. Our current canine is, um, is a little younger and is a different breed and can, and really is not in the schools. Um, so when we go read to the kids and those sorts of things, like that canine would not be the kind of canine that you would bring into the schools. Um, but this one would be. And it would be one that would really bring us out into the community, make us more approachable and, um.
It would just travel around with the officer, the community officer.
Right, right. And we would do it with current staff. The idea would be, um, to take one of our school officers, broaden their perspective, so it wasn't just schools, um, and kind of realign to allow them to be able to go out and do a lot more of these community events and functions. So.
And you, one of the things that, we've talked about this for a while now, but you've talked to a couple of chiefs that you know well and that they have the dogs. And why don't you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah. So Chief Dooley is a close friend of mine. He used to be a chief in Orange, Connecticut. And we go, I've known him for over 20 years, um, and very well respected. Um, I, I respect his opinion and his advice. Um, Chief LJ Fazaro from Groton, same thing. They have comfort dogs and they say it's the best thing they've done in the last 15 years. So these are two chiefs that you would go to kind of to say, and, and that's why, and they say it's just the morale in the police department, but also the community involvement has just been unbelievable. Um, and it's been way more than they even could have imagined. So, um, you know, that, the, and that's why, in talking about this, I don't take it lightly. I mean, you haven't seen many new proposals from me about many things, right? The things that I bring forward are things that I truly believe in that are gonna work. I wouldn't bring it to you if it didn't. And so this is one of those things that after talking to these communities and chiefs and seeing the impact, I think it would be phenomenal for our agency and the community.
So are you asking for the funding for this budget?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay.
So it's not in the budget. And so the, the good thing is, is that the training is done. The dog is actually, um, donated to us. And, um, basically what we have to do because of labor laws, pay one hour a day for an officer to care for it. Now, it's minimum wage. It's not an officer's salary. So that's where the funding comes in for that and the food. And that's it.
And you said about between eight and $10,000.
Correct.
And then, um, and my thought was, and I don't know how, what the full budget's gonna look like, but eight or $10,000 out of the whole large budget, we could probably find without making any changes to the budget. But, um, because of, but that said, it is a new service. It's a new employee. So I wanted to, you know, make sure that if there was an interest in that, that we could.
Middletown does this. They're, they have Canine Bear who's become like a mascot in Middletown. It's in every business. It's on every business's Instagram post, every school. It's hugged and kissed every day by somebody in that town. And I think it, it really, exactly what you said, I would, I think it makes a lot of sense.
Yeah. And, yeah, you wouldn't want to hug our current canine, but.
No, I got that.
I have other videos for that one.
I think I saw Officer O'Donnell's, uh, the football game, and I would not want to hug that.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
And I can personally attest to being Canine Drac's handler, that it opened up so many doors in my career with that dog in this town, community, school, to go into classrooms, to see those kids light up and smile, teachers, um, morale, like you said, the PD, everybody liked to see that dog, whether he was there to work or just to hang out and sit by your side. It was, uh, something to really behold. And like you said, chief, to be walking in a parade and everybody screaming out that dog's name. You said, we didn't have to be there. That dog could have just did what he wanted to do and he had everybody's support. So I think this is a great idea and I would love to see that come to fruition.
Other questions?
Let's vote.
Sam, well, look, it's, it's, you're always talking about the tools in the toolbox and, uh, what are the effective tools we have. It sounds like this is a good win. So.
We'll come back to it when we talk about it. Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, great. And I, um, oh, communications, uh, page 40?
Do we need a TA?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. TA, Police Department is 31 through 39.
39, I'm sorry. Yes, like to make a motion to TA pages 31 through 39 of the town manager's proposed budget.
Second. Motion is second. Any further discussions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passing out.
What page is communications?
40.
Thank you.
Yeah, page 40. That's just our dispatch center. That's usually included, but, um, and there's really no change in, uh, our dispatchers, flat.
Uh, the only, I mean, the only difference is their, uh, contract was settled, right?
Right.
So.
Exactly.
That's the.
And that's just page 40.
Any questions on the page 40 here?
Make a motion to temporarily approve page 40 of the town manager's proposed budget.
Second. I have a motion of second. Any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passing out.
And then page 41 is our EMS service. That's to provide, uh, coverage for paramedics and ambulance. And that's a contract, contracted out of service. Oh, the C, I'm sorry. I'm wrong. That's a C-MED. You can explain what that is, Paul.
So that, so by law, we have to pay this amount. It's our portion. It's the way that the ambulance is communicate with the hospitals when they're going in. So it's called C-MED. That's the frequency. So when they're coming in, that's how they communicate with the doctors to let them know. Sometimes they get orders, paramedics, whether they can, uh, use certain narcotics and that sort of thing. And C-MED is the frequency. So, um, the state is the one that sends us the, um, the bill for it. And that's been our constant bill.
Any questions?
Like to make a motion to temporarily approve page 41 of the town manager's proposed budget.
Second. Motion is second. Any further comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passing out.
And that's it?
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Can I come back and be that handler?
You've had your turn.
What another one?
If you volunteer.
Perfect. I'll volunteer all day long for that. Best part of my career.
Our next is, uh, the library. And they come on up and they are on page 17. And we'll put their video on for a minute, their presentation. And how are you guys doing? Good. I'll be, I'll be getting out of your way. But let me just get to page 17. I'll be out of your way in a second. As you can see on page 17, this is the, a page that you guys support nonprofit organizations. And you can see on page 17, three, uh, down is the library grant. So they're part of this page. The, my recommended, um, amount is $2,837,235. And that is a 2.74% increase above, uh, what the last year's budget was. How I came to that number is that I matched it with the town operations and my increase was 2.74%. So that's what that number was. So I will, on that, turn it over to you guys. And. Thank you, Kat.
Oh, take your time. Thanks.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for your time. I think I know almost all of you. I'm Jory Andrews, the current chair of the library board. And this is Chris Lindquist, our executive director. Uh, I know we, we definitely know most of you. So we're pleased that see, things seem to be getting back to normal at the libraries now. You know, even the last few days at my office, it's full of people again and things are, things are, things are happening. So for the, just a few. Sorry, it's coming. It's coming.
There we go.
Great.
Thanks, Kat.
So could, do we have a control? Yeah. So here is our fiscal, proposed fiscal year 2023 budget. You'll see at the top, our total budget is this $3,105 figure. It's about a 3.7% increase from last year. But we know the town budget is tight. We didn't want to ask for anything more than anyone else. So we have, uh, reduced our request to the 2.74% that matches the, uh, the town figures at this point. And the difference will be made up by the FVG LA and just controlling some expenses. The predominant portion of the increases at this point in time has related to health insurance costs, which continue to go up, you know, annually. So we're having to deal with that. And we do have a few more full-time employees. We're balancing out full-time and part-time employees that we had to supply medical insurance for. So that's why our figure was a little higher than it's been for prior years. So if you take a look at this budget, the, uh, 2.837, $2,837 figure is what Kathy was recommending at the 2.74% increase. You'll see that the FVG LA, our parent, you know, organization, since we're an associated, association library, not owned by the town, is next. They're increasing their contribution by about $30,000. So that's a 16% increase. Then we have a grant from LCI. That's the Library Connection, um, Inc. Um, we're moving the library services back to this service called the Library Connection that deals with a lot of towns in our vicinity. A number of years ago, we had gone to a standalone service, which, um, had been recommended by Jay Johnston years ago that was a little cheaper. But it put us, we found, really isn't a cost savings. And the community's been asking us to be back with the other connection. The other connection does is they transfer books between member libraries at no charge to us. When we were a standalone, we had to make a staff person work in full-time, making phone calls to another library, saying, can I get this book for someone? Then someone had to drive there to get it. So ended up that it really wasn't a cost saving. So, um, the Library Connection, as part of us are signing back up with them, is giving us a grant of the cost for the first year so that we have that grant. The only area in which we're showing our income going down is the other income. That is predominantly, um, we are proposing this year as of January to eliminate fines. It's a growing trend across the country. A lot of people are finding that, you know, they see fines as an impediment to people taking out books. And there are studies that show that it really doesn't affect the percentage of books that are actually returned to the library. We ultimately do get them back anyway. So Chris can speak to that a little bit more if you have questions. But that ends up totaling the 2.74% increase that we're asking for, for the current year. Um, over the course of the last year, we've dealt with a lot of hybrid services still, but we're really able to get back to full services now. The library's open full-time, all the hours that we previously were. Um, over the last year, we've increased, we have some figures we'll show you for high increases for, um, reference and electronic books, which increased drastically during COVID. And our librarians spent a lot of time helping people around town with the reference services, whether it was job hunting or reference, because they couldn't be freely roaming the library. But we're now moving back to full-time there. Um, we've reorganized some of the personnel in a more logical way. We've added a, uh, branch manager at the Barney Library. So there is somebody there who is responsible all the time. And we don't have to keep sending a librarian running from the main branch over to the Barney whenever there's an issue. So that's all worked out pretty well. Um, last, I think, overall comment I'd like to give you is we've been very active in getting some new committees active on the library over the course of the last year to, to plan for things, including our capital planning committee. You know, this year, we put a membrane roof on the library. We're redesigning the children's rooms so it better serves the children's area because we have a massive number and high attendance in children's programs. Um, we have a technology committee who's helping us with be a little more proactive about planning when we replace equipment rather than just reacting to when something breaks down and needing replacement. A personnel committee that we needed a lot during COVID to develop new policies. And we have an art committee that hopefully we'll be able to start running some things and events at the Barney Library again and in our community room as we're able to bring people back in more. And, uh, the Farmington Room Committee is digitizing a lot of the Farmington historic history that we had to, to preserve it so that it's available online for, uh, for patrons. So that's just a brief overview. And I thought maybe, Chris, you could run through the, uh, quickly. We won't take too much of your time.
Yep. So, um, thank you, Jory. And, and I just wanted to say that, that's a tough act to follow when you're following, um, a presentation with adorable laboratory retrievers. I can't follow that, but, but I'll do my best. And so I appreciate the opportunity to just talk about, uh, some of the, uh, usage this past year. So I think the operative word from the. So I think the operative word from the past year is adaptability, and I can't say enough about our staff and our board and their willingness to adapt as needed due to the pandemic. So as you might expect, I mean, because we were closed part of the time this past fiscal year, and we reopened on a kind of a phased-in plan, our building visits are down significantly, and you can see the building visits from the past couple of fiscal years. Items borrowed also down significantly, because we, again, were primarily providing services in curbside pickup and grab-and-go, where people would be able to come in the lobby, but not stay in the library to browse our collections and be served by our staff. So those areas are obviously down, but they are down in libraries across the nation, obviously, because of COVID. The area which Jory mentioned where borrowing is up significantly is electronic borrowing. And so for those of you who don't know, we have an amazing array of electronic resources that you can access via our website twenty-four-seven, and a lot of our, you know, electronic increase was due to the pandemic, so people were at home, not able to come to the library physically, but they were able to, you know, read an ebook, or, you know, borrow an e-video or an e-audio, and so that, that borrowing went up about thirty-eight percent this past year. In the other areas, again, you know, because of our, you know, need to be closed due to the pandemic, programs were, you know, the number was down, the attendance was down. I will say, however, that we were offering a lot of remote programs, so virtual programs via Zoom, we did some pre-recorded programs, and as you can see at the bottom of the slide, those were up about a hundred and two percent. So it actually increased from the prior fiscal year FY twenty, the number of people who are viewing pre-recorded programs. And as I mentioned, you know, the reference assistance that was needed went up significantly. So even though we had an increase the prior year, it went up to seventy-five thousand reference inquiries, which is phenomenal, about an eighty percent increase. And that was due primarily to the fact that people needed more assistance in accessing some of the electronic resources, using whatever device they were using, whether it was an iPhone or, you know, a tablet or a laptop, or perhaps a desktop, and then, you know, finding out what are the steps in order to actually download, write an e-resource onto their device. So I can't say enough about our reference staff, amazing efforts on their part to continue to engage people and, you know, allow them to borrow materials despite the pandemic. So this, again, just kind of gives you the, in terms of the libraries in Connecticut, it gives you some context in terms of how libraries within the state were impacted by the pandemic. Program attendance, obviously, was down, as I mentioned, library visits was down, circulation was down, and in our case, we kind of bucked the trend, because our electronic resources, the borrowing was, was just sky-high. And I attribute that really to the fact that we do promote those electronic resources, and in this community, I think, you know, people were determined to continue to take advantage of those resources, and they were calling our reference staff and finding out how to access those materials. So that was, you know, kind of, I guess, the silver lining to the pandemic. The next slide is just a little more context. So, you know, we, we work with the state library, we work with the Connecticut Library Consortium, our peers within the state, and, you know, the state of Connecticut put out a kind of a message with respect to how statewide services worked during COVID, and they talk about the dampening effect of COVID on library services and the impact on programs, you know, circulation, reference, the number of people using a public computer, because many of the libraries were closed for a period of time, interlibrary loan, all of that usage was down. In our case, we kind of bucked the trend, because our electronic circulation was up significantly, about twenty-eight-point-three percent versus twenty-three-point-nine percent in the state, and again, our reference inquiries grew by more than eighty percent. And in addition, the first bullet noted, notes that our, kind of, the number of library programs and recordings at our libraries was up fifty-eight percent, so that people were still being engaged, children, teens, and adults were still attending, you know, programs primarily via Zoom during that time period. And the next slide's just, I've got a few slides here that kind of give you a comparison with our peer group, and our peer group includes Avon, Simsbury, Ridgefield, Newington, Glastonbury. We consider those our peers. Farmington, again, is kind of the head of the pack in terms of the number of reference questions that our reference staff answered. E-book circulation, we're, again, leading, leading that peer group. Children's materials, the circulation of our, of all of our materials, and we're, we're the highest in the peer group in terms of the number of materials that we can attribute to children's circulation. So again, our children's, you know, kind of collections are noted, a lot of libraries borrow from us, because we've got such a fantastic collection in our children's room. Young adult materials also, you know, quite high during that fiscal year. And I'm just showing you a few slides about how we compared the expenditure on children's materials, as well as our children's book collection per capita. It's one of the largest collections in terms of our children's book resources within our peer group, and really within the state. It's one of the largest collections available in terms of children's fiction and nonfiction. And then we kind of show you some of the other statistical usage with respect to downloadable audio, so that was also, we were highest in terms of our peer group, as well as e-media circulation, as I mentioned. So those are just kind of giving you some comparison with other libraries. One of the new services I'm happy to talk about is we've just installed about two weeks ago, something called laptops-to-go. It's kind of a self-service kiosk that's in our main library, at the main library in the lobby, and it was paid for by ARPA funds, so that was part of the ARPA funding that we received from the federal government. And we can now loan out laptops self-service, you come in with your library card, and you can borrow a laptop for a week, and you can return it to that kiosk, and, you know, it's being widely used, is popular, and I expect the demand will continue to grow. And, you know, once we, if there are future funds available, we might want to put one over at the Barney Library, so it's, it's a great, you know, kind of service for those who don't have a laptop. So Jory mentioned that we are planning to eliminate overdue fines, and we probably all grew up going to the library and having to maybe occasionally pay an overdue fine. It's a very outmoded philosophy, that's kind of a twentieth-century philosophy. So now, in the twenty-first century, more and more libraries are eliminating overdue fines, as Jory mentioned, it doesn't really incentivize somebody to return a book. Ninety-nine-point-eight percent of the time, people return books on time, and so, you know, a ten percent overdue fine is not going to incentivize somebody. So we really want to eliminate the barriers to access, we want to provide access to all of our resources, and we don't want overdue fines to be a barrier in any sense. Part of kind of equity and inclusion and diversity, a lot of libraries have already eliminated fines, and we're, I'm happy to say that the board supported, are eliminating it as of January of next year, and you can kind of see the trend towards fine-free, going fine-free. And that will be simultaneous with our rejoining the consortium. So the consortium, as Jory mentioned, includes libraries in the greater Hartford area. We were part of the consortium, I think about a dozen years ago, and then the former library director pulled out of the consortium, went with a standalone called Koha. We have, since I've been here a year and a half, gotten a lot of inquiries from our patrons and from other directors at other libraries in the consortium, saying, when are you going to come back to the consortium? So I'm happy to say we are rejoining it as of January, and that, you know, people will have access to all of the libraries, there are about thirty libraries in that network, they'll have access to all of those resources within the network via, you know, the computers in our library. So you can imagine all of the interlibrary loan that will be happening, you know, we'll be sending materials to other libraries, and other libraries will be questing materials from our library, so it's going to go up significantly. These slides are just, you know, some happy slides, I guess, kind of competing with the video of the Labrador Retriever, so this is our show and tell. So just, you know, amazing children's programs, again, primarily, we were doing a lot of online programs during the pandemic. We did do some outdoor programs when possible, during good weather, and in some cases, we were able to do small programs within our main community room at the library. Can't say enough about the quality of the programs that we provide, our children's, teen, and adult services staff do an amazing job continuing to engage people despite the pandemic. And so these are just some photos of the grab-and-go and the make-and-take crafts that we made available, so that people could come in and, you know, continue to be engaged in programs, despite, again, being closed to the public part of the time. Teen services, we have a new teen librarian, she's already been working with, you know, teachers at the high school and the middle school. We have teens that are part of a teen advisory board, she's engaging them in reading books, and they've been doing some teen book reviews that are also available online. We're known for our garminy music series programs, hopefully some of you have been able to attend some of those programs. We like to do them over at the lawn, on the lawn of the Barney Library, and hoping to continue to start, or at least start to do those this coming summer and fall. So these are just some other photos of outdoor events that we were able to do during, during the pandemic, including some book discussion groups over at the Barney Library, and some nature programs outside, as well as a outdoor story walk, and, you know, anything that we could do outside in a safe way, we were, we were able to do. So in terms of adult programs, again, we did primarily online, you know, virtual programs, but we did do some programs for small groups, and these are just some photos of some of those programs. And finally, our patrons tell us that, you know, they really, really appreciated our efforts to go above and beyond during the pandemic, to continue to provide materials that they were interested in, whether they were physical books, or, you know, resources or e-resources. And so these are just some quotes from parents and some avid readers, we call them the Unionville Sisters, but two particular readers in Unionville that were very, very gracious in their comments and thanking us for all that our staff did during the pandemic to continue to provide recreational reading for them. And that's all I have, so I'm happy to take any questions, Jory and I are here to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you.
Keith?
Thank you for coming and for your presentation. I know that you were very receptive to the council's wanting to be very tight on this budget, given what's going on in the community with the high school and everything, and I really, I know that was a lot of work, and I really appreciate you guys putting that together for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One question I had been asked was, I think, and I know a lot of this is pandemic-related, and I think we're coming out of some of it, the, some of the children's set up in the main branch?
Yeah.
That had been, it's come down with COVID, is some of that going to be reinstituted, and are we looking forward to?
Yes, great question, and I believe you may have kids that.
I really want to bring my kids.
Frequent the children's room, so that's probably what you're asking. Yes, and that is actually the case, and part of the reason that there have been some changes despite COVID, we're also planning for a complete redesign of the children's space.
Cool.
So those changes, you'll be seeing them end of April, early May, we're getting some new furnishings, new shelving, and a complete redesign of that space. So we've been working with the designer over the past year, and I'm happy to say that, you know, by May, you'll, you'll see those changes. We also did during COVID need to take away some of the play toys.
Yeah, I totally understand, I just know, you know, in speaking with other parents with, you know.
Oh, yes.
It's great to have, you know, two hours over the night.
Absolutely.
So I know that the community is really looking forward to getting that.
It's going to be an amazing project, and we're getting some support from the FVG LA towards that project as well, and, you know, it's going to be, we have people that come here from other communities, you know, surrounding communities, that love the children's room at the main library, so I know it's going to be exceptionally popular.
Right.
Yeah, what they're doing right now, the librarian's desk in the children's room is over on one side, and we have the activities for the different kids are like mixed, so you'll have like two-year-olds in one area, who may be walking through the teen area to get to the eight-year-old area for their brothers or sisters. So we're moving the main desk to the middle of the room, so the librarians can see what's going on and observe everything.
Exactly.
And the activities, as we renovate, are being regrouped, so kids, activities for younger ages are in one area, the tween, the teens are upstairs, but the tweens then have their own corner where they're not, right next to the little kids with the two-year-olds running through.
Yeah, we call them age-appropriate zones, so it's kind of different zones, and again, the tweens don't want to be anywhere near the younger ones, right? They want to have their own space, and they do, they have a cool space, but it's going to be kind of separate, so.
Great.
It'll be, it'll be quite, quite an experience, once we have it all developed, so.
Thank you.
Brian?
I just wanted to add that I thought that your community outreach programming during COVID, like the mind-body-spirit series that you did at, where did you, where did you at?
So we were working with Hartford Healthcare, also had kind of a partnership with us, and we were providing some, you know, online programs with health and wellness. And I know, Brian, you know, we're looking forward to working with you and Live Well as well, hoping to provide some, you know, kind of educational programs regarding dementia and cognitive issues, and perhaps someday, I'm hoping that we can develop a memory cafe. Libraries are providing that kind of a memory cafe now. During COVID, obviously, it probably was difficult, I know you did some that were virtual in nature, we're hoping to actually do a physical memory cafe once a month, perhaps, you know, at the main library, so looking forward to working with you on that, on that initiative.
I'm, my kids are now aged out, but we have really fond memories of the horse in the library, because you get your little token, and then you'd go, so I'm all about the Saturday morning, if I could deposit my kids there, I really would. But my question is about going fine-free, and a twelve-year-old me is celebrating right now, because I was that kid, I was about in that two percent, who had a very hefty, hefty library debit. So do you think that you'll need additional funds for more volumes of books, for example, like maybe high schoolers, when they have a project due or for a specific book? Do you see potentially needing extra copies of books, because now you have gone fine-free, so kids can take these books out and?
Sure.
Maybe not be that.
I appreciate the question. So it's interesting, because once we rejoin the consortium, we're going to have access to millions of, you know, titles that we don't currently have, at least, easy access to. So within a day, we'll be able to access, you know, a title that may be very popular, you know, through the network from surrounding libraries. So I don't think that's going to be an issue, but we do, particularly with popular books like bestsellers, we'll order five copies of a bestselling title normally, so, and if we get such demand that we need to order some additional copies, we will do that for bestselling items. I guess it depends on what the title is and how much demand it is. But I, so one of the things that, you know, I think we're noticing is that more and more people are using the electronic resources, and when you have electronic ebooks, you know, it's unlimited. Typically, you know, you can have fifty people borrowing one title, whereas if you had a physical book, that would be, you know, they'd have to get in queue, so to speak, and put that book on hold. So I think, you know, usage is changing in that respect, and it will continue to change.
I'm still the kind of person that likes pages.
As am I.
I do.
As am I.
Yeah, Chris presented some information to the board when we were reviewing the proposal, and it's interesting, there have been studies that you really don't get much bigger a percentage of any loss of books if you go, if you go fine-free.
Yeah, we know that some people, again, it could be a barrier, I mean, you know, if they can't afford to pay a fifty-dollar fine, and then their card is blocked, and they stop using the library, that's the last thing we want. We want people to be accessing the resources and using the library.
Right, I'm all for full access, but I think also just being prepared should.
Sure.
For example, you need multiple copies of the books, but going to the consortium seems like it would be a workaround to that issue.
I believe that is the case, yeah, we kind of aligned it so that we would eliminate the fines as we were rejoining the consortium.
Just a comment, but so someone who's probably only frequent in the library as a young person, maybe on my hand, I can count it, more of a numbers person. That being said, I can't say enough about the programs you've had for children, I've got a few of them. My wife has frequented those programs in the past, and my children probably walk over from our house at least once a week to check out books, so I'm one of those households now that has a stack that's got to go back, and it's got to go back every Thursday, because that's the way we keep track. So I just want to say thank you.
That's great, we appreciate it, thank you.
I should have given credit to the Friends, we didn't mention the Friends, too, but we have a very active Friends group there, and the fundraising from the Friends. And the fundraising from the Friends basically pays for almost all the children's programming for the year. So that's not an out-of-pocket in our budget because we get donations from the Friends to support those programs.
Yeah. Yeah, and their primary fundraising activity is book sales, obviously. And during the pandemic, they weren't really doing that, but I believe they're planning one next fall. So they are still planning to do them and and provide funding for children's programs as well as museum passes and things like that. We can't thank the Friends enough.
Other question. Joe?
You did mention about being open and inclusive to everybody. So is there a fee to get a library card?
There is no fee, no. If you're a resident of the town, you can get a library card.
And for the ebooks and stuff, is there a fee for that stuff?
No fee. So as long as you have a library card, you can borrow e-materials, no fee at all.
Excellent. So obviously with the e-material, you have it for a week and then it just shuts off?
Well, yes, in some cases you can renew. It depends on the item, but, you know, some items you can renew, some items, there is no renewal. It really depends on what the item is.
Okay.
It's usually more like two or three weeks. It's like the regular book borrowing period of time. We do have some limitations because you do pay by the number of people who do it. Unfortunately, the big book-selling companies don't give libraries discounts. We end up buying books at relatively high rates. They were not allowed to buy from an Amazon or something. But the?
So they basically what, give you like a license number so if the book title exists, you get five licenses?
There are licensing agreements and right now, I think, the publishing industry has changed a lot because of electronic books and I think there's five or six major publishers and they kind of command, you know, whatever it is the license agreements are and, you know, they they negotiate with states. And it depends on the licensing agreement essentially about how many, you know, e-titles can be borrowed at one time or if they can be renewed. We're continuing to kind of work with our our state colleagues to kind of try and push, you know, the publishers in the direction of, you know, giving libraries a break. They haven't so far.
And my last would be for the, your new laptop program that you're doing. Is there a fee for that?
There is no fee.
So?
Yeah.
Do you tie a credit card up? Are you taking a deposit? Someone decides?
And I appreciate the question. So some of our peer libraries have already started loaning laptops and I'm happy to say that most of the time, the laptops come back in good condition and they're returned on time. We are going to, you know, give it a six-month kind of test period and see how this goes. We are not requiring a deposit. We're not requiring a credit card. We're going to see how this goes and if we need to, you know, review our policies at the end of the six-month trial period, we will do that. But right now, we're not requiring a deposit.
All right.
Yep.
There are a lot of additional services at no charge too. Like we have museum passes. People who, when they want to go to any local museum can come pick one up at the library, borrow it, not have to pay admission fees. Lots of programs.
Yeah, very popular. And again, you know, I can't say enough about the support of the board and also the town manager, and she is the best town manager in Connecticut. And I appreciate the fact that we are being, you know, funded at the 2.74%. I realize that the high school project is a significant driver of the budgets, but we are doing the, you know, as as best as we can with with the, you know, support from the town. So I appreciate that.
With that, guys, one more. Are you working in collaboration with the high school, with their librarian stuff?
So? Right, so.
They give like a heads up, hey, we're going this way. We need A, B, and C.
Absolutely. And and our staff, both our our teen librarian and our children's librarian work and and meet with the school librarians, you know, I think relatively closely. And, you know, I think we're we're trying to determine what it is that they would like us to do during the high school project. We know that more and more students will be coming to the library. They obviously come right to the library after school, but there are going to be certain, I'm sure, impacts from the construction over two years and they'll be needing some resources, perhaps computers, space to to meet and collaborate. So we're going to be, you know, talking about that with with the high school as well.
Great, thank you.
Yep, and we have trustees who serve rolling like three or four-year terms. So one of the trustees we added this year is the head guidance counselor at the high school, Kate Martarelli. So she's provided some really good input there.
All right. Any other questions?
Well, thank you. The library always does a tremendous job in town. It's always on the top of the list of one of the?
Thank you.
Benefits to being in Farmington. Love to see it back open. It was a tough two years for everyone and throughout. I think you had some creative uses during that, so thank you. And you mentioned the Friends. The Friends do a great job for you, I know that. So thank you for coming in.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
TA?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to temporarily approve the Farmington Library's 2022-2023 budget.
Second?
We have a motion in a second. Any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now take a brief break because I think we're a little past our dinnertime. Okay, 7:11, we are back. Kathy?
So CJ, we and the group, we have basically have gone through our schedule for today on Wednesday, March 9th. We have three more items to cover to go through the entire budget. It would be the benefits section, debt, and non-tax revenues. The way we've been going, if people are up for it, I would say that we could get through those three items tonight. And then tomorrow would be kind of just a recap of everything and discussion.
That sounds very reasonable. Nobody has any place to go because they plan on being here for another three hours. I think we're good.
Two hours.
Overtime.
We were planning overtime.
Overtime. I was thinking about four years ago.
All right, so we'll start on benefits and that is the blue tab in the back of the book page?
Sixty-six and sixty-seven.
Sixty-six and sixty-seven. So this account has gone up 4.6%. I think we'd just talk a little bit about the pension account. So the pension account is in the benefits, has been increased due to the reduction in the assumed rate of return on the pension investments from 6.875 to 6.75%. And if people that have been on the council before and remember that the pension board is slowly asking us to start reducing the the rate of return. Again, it doesn't seem like much, but it's a big number every time we reduce it. So we've been doing it every year. So that, part of that 4.7% in the benefits is because of that reduction because the account, correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, is actually doing quite well, the benefits account, right? Yeah, so it's?
Pension account.
Pension account.
Yeah, did very well last year.
So, so that's part of that. And this also has our 401s in the account.
Right, the, yeah, the pension account does, it funds two different things. The people who are in the defined benefit plan, which is the old retirement plan pension account that we had, and that was basically anybody hired prior to 2012 or any police or fire, firefighter. In other words, the the old pension account is closed to anybody, to all employees except police employees and fire employees since 2012. So there's two, so the first part is the, the largest part actually is the contribution to the defined benefit plan for the people in the norm, the old pension plan. And there's the people in the 401 plan, which basically what happens is there's a match. The town matches the employees at 6%. Employees required to contribute 6% to the defined contribution plan. The town matches that 6%, and 6% is your your base salary. It's not your total earnings, just your base salary. And that, of that 4.5 million dollars, that's showing there about 300,000 is the contribution to the defined contribution plan. The rest of it is the contribution to the defined benefit plan. So that's?
And you can see on the page 66, the other items that are in the account, the social security, the pension, the health insurance, life and disability insurance, unemployment, tuition, employee assistance, workers' comp, and heart and hypertension. So those are our accounts. And even though the 4%, it's a big number, these accounts have in the past have really been driven very high. So this is actually rather stable, especially with the fact that we've been, we have been lowering the rate of return. Health insurance has gone up. We didn't have a great year this year. We've had some really good years in the last couple of years, so that usually happens that you have a bad year. This hasn't been a great year.
Is it due to COVID or just other factors?
No, it's a combination of, part of it's due to COVID. When COVID hit, obviously, nobody went to the hospitals, nobody went to the doctors other than for COVID. So there's a lot of delay in in medical procedures and that's coming, coming up now. But a lot of it is catastrophic, what we would call catastrophic claims. It's just basically people in the plan who've had large claims due to cancer or major illnesses that's driving the number right now. It's fairly cyclical in terms, you know, you'll go through three or four years of of large claims and then it will level off or be actually decline and then it will jump up again. What, the other part of the thing that we're catching this is because of COVID and because we had, people weren't going to the doctors. When the actuary does the contribution calculation, they base it on claims. They base it on prior claims, medical inflation, things like that. So when COVID hit and claims all dropped, claims experience looked really good. So the actuary said, oh, no, your claim is really good. Obviously, discount sum up for COVID, but our our numbers dropped a few, two years ago, actually the year we're living in. Right now, our our claims experience was so good the prior year that our numbers went down, our contribution went down. So it was a false decline, but it went down. Now, because things are back to normal pretty much and there are some catastrophic claims out there, the numbers have jumped up again.
All right. And one last for heart and hypertension. Is that's what that would be phased out since?
Yeah.
Like I know like for police officers hired after such and such a date, they don't have access to that claim anymore?
Yeah, they're, well, the problem is there, there's still people who were hired before that day.
Yeah.
And, you know, and I hate to put it this way, but until they pass away.
Okay, so that stays with you for, I thought, okay, so it doesn't, does it phase out after retirement?
The majority of that amount that's bludgeoned here is for police officers with a, police officer passed away about 20 years ago. So it's, you know, it's with you until?
Until that part. Gotcha.
That's it for fringe benefits.
There, has there ever been discussion about doing the defined contribution for fire and police? I know you said 2012. It was a transition. Obviously, this probably goes back way before a lot of us, but has there ever been discussion on that end or is that something that's negotiated with the contracts when they, when they come up? I, just because I'm new here, I don't know how it works.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, it's definitely negotiated with the contracts. We, as the town, and I still support the the position is that, have not felt that there's still a lot of, most police departments still have a defined benefit, I mean, a defined, yeah?
Benefit.
Defined benefit. And for recruitment purposes and things like that, if you don't have that, you're not going to recruit the best of the best. So back then, when we changed over, we made a determination not to change the police over at that time. And I still feel that that's probably where we should be.
Understood.
In the fire contract, they actually have an option between a defined benefit and a defined compensation, but they choose the the pension more times than not.
The defined contribution, as the chief actually said before, we've attracted three candidates from other, or three officers from other departments who were in defined contribution plans. And in meeting with each one of them, they came in, called them, said, you know, I'm here because you're defined benefit. I didn't have that before. And so what we find, and with our firefighters too, they have the option, but usually the ones who take the defined contribution plan are the ones that don't stay here long.
Okay.
So the ones who, you know, they pretty much turn over four to five years. And then they, at the time we did close the plan, it was negotiated with some of the unions. The police union did negotiate substantial changes to their pension form. So that made it more, and actually, one of the things they did that was a big benefit to the town was that they capped their benefit. So people hired after 2012, their benefits capped at like 65% of their base salary. So it's, it really, it helps, it helps out a lot to me through that.
And that was one of the kind of points with the council back then, that if they were going to keep the police pension, they had to make changes to the pension plan. And they did make changes to the pension plan. And so I think it's worked out on both sides.
And when you're, when you're talking divine, defined benefit, does the same rules apply when, you know, you turn 67 and you go to Medicare?
Not for the police.
No?
No.
Okay. So that would be, is in the private industry, you know, you know, if you have someone on payroll that reaches the age of 67, they go off of the the company payroll or the company health insurance plan and they go into Medicare and that kind of thing?
No. You know, you, you would stay in our plan, I'm sorry, you actually could do that. We get audited constantly. Now, speaking from experience, when I turned 65, you know, I got a mail here at work, as part of my work responsibilities, saying, hey, you know, this guy just turned 65, is he, is he still on your health insurance? And just remind you that your primary, we're, we're secondary. So, so, yeah, I mean, and that basically happens here. I hate to really say it, but we don't have too many people over 65 at this point. They come like probably the second oldest person in the town, working for the town right now.
Okay.
You don't look it.
So that's it for benefits.
66 and 67?
Yep.
Any other questions?
I'd like to make a motion to temporarily accept pages 66 and 62, 67 of the town manager's 2022-2023 budget.
Second?
A motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Do debt, Joe, next?
Yeah, so if you, just quickly, we're going to do debt, but just if everyone, just to go to the front page of the budget, just so we can just show the tax and budget worksheet. So on the expenditure side, we've gone through the education, we've gone through the town. We're now going to talk about the debt number. And the debt number, as you can see on the front page, is 9306656, which is an increase of 103, 1,034,309. It's a 12.50%. And then the debt is on, in the back on page 68. And then Joe will go through that.
This is where we pay 99% of our debt service, various obligations, long-term obligations that we have. As you can see on page 68, the, we pay lease financing, we pay bond interest, bond principal and our clean water fund loans. Our lease financing numbers are for two long-term leases we have. They're, they're actually both energy performance leases, one was when we purchased the streetlights, the other one is for the energy conservation improvements we did in, throughout town in 2012. Those numbers are slow, those numbers actually will be relatively stable for the next 10 years and then they'll drop off suddenly or dramatically. It's a negative. Bonded interest and bonded principal, that's for our long-term debt. And there's substantial increase here. And as council may recall, like about a month or so ago, I indicated that we would be selling $40 million in long-term bonds. We did that on February 23rd. We actually, we did that, we doubled what we were supposed to do, referring to the financial forecast, we were supposed to do $20 million this year. Because of the threat of interest rates climbing, we, and actually, we're seeing interest rates climb pretty significantly the first couple, first six weeks of January, February, first six weeks of the year. We doubled it to $40 million instead of the $20 million, tried to capture some of the lower interest rates. And we were fairly successful. We ended up with a 2.38% true interest cost on the loans. They were 20 years. And actually, so based on what was happening around us at the time with other communities, it's actually a pretty good rate. And I have to say that, you know, one of the unfortunate, one of the good things, if there are any good things of the conflict over in Europe was that we basically sold a couple of days after the invasion of Ukraine and the markets really scrambled at that point and we just caught it right. And everybody was looking for safe, safe places to put their money. So we ended up actually, that forty million dollar issue, we ended up with ten bids, you know, which is pretty significant. You have ten, ten investment firms wanting their money, you know, at that point in time. So it, it really worked out for the town, it really worked out well for the town. So we have that built into this budget. And you see the principal payment on that each year will be twenty million dollars. If you look on the opposite side of this schedule, you'll see a line that says twenty twenty-two bond issue, twenty years, the two point three eight percent interest rate. And then principal, principal payments starting next year with two million dollars and the interest payment next year will be five hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars. Let's get a caveat with that. In order to get to an interest rate of two point three eight percent, we got a substantial premium from the investment, from the buyers of the bonds. Premium is, is they basically paid us money. So instead of tomorrow, we're going to close on this debt, which means we'll actually get the money tomorrow. It'll actually be transferred into our account. And they're going to basically wire us forty million dollars plus another two point five million dollars. That two point five million dollars is to be used to help us pay the interest that they're charging us. So basically, they're giving us the money, we're going to give it back to them over the next twenty years. So that's what's helping keep that number down low for next year. That two point five million dollars will be spread out over three years, you know, it will go against the interest cost over the next three years. So three years from now, that number will start to creep up again. You'll start to see your debt service increase on the interest side of it. So it really works out for us this year, it's kind of like everything worked together for this bond issue, making a pretty good bond issue. And then the other issue that, other thing that we pay here is when we did the upgrade to the treatment plan, we took out clean water fund loans for two percent. And that's what that other category is. We have three loans out there and we're paying back on those and the interest of, or the payments on those will total up almost three million dollars next year. And we'll talk about in a couple of minutes on the revenue side, we actually received about seven hundred thousand dollars back from different towns and users of the plant. Their assessment of levy or assessment to help us pay for this debt service. So we do get some revenue on the, on the revenue side to offset that three million dollars.
So it's almost paying the interest, basically? Because you have interest listed at seven, seven, seven?
It's slightly less than the interest. It's slightly less than the interest. And that's pretty much the debt.
I think Joe is being a little bit modest about the, the rate and how everything went. It really, you couldn't have asked for it to go any better. And how we took on that much debt and able to afford it and, you know, with the whole school project. And I think it should, you know, Joe really manages our finances, but if you look here, we're paying for a brand-new treatment plan. You're paying, we're taking on forty million dollars more on a school project, which was double what we were planning on doing yet. And you all know, we haven't talked about it yet, what the tax rate is. And so he really, Joe has done a spectacular job just managing our financing and, you know, just the timing of this. I know some of it was not, you didn't do the timing exactly with the, the Ukraine stuff, but really, how it was all planned out is really, really fabulous.
Or did he?
Joe, what was your, when we were going through the high school project, what was the assumption on your interest rates? I think you had it climbing up over the three years we were looking at.
When we looked at the overall number of debt issues, we averaged it out about, we started at three percent. We increased it incrementally up to, I think it was three point two five percent. So, but one of the things, one of the unknowns is always not just what the market's looking for, but how much of a premium you can get back on, you know, if they're going to give you back. On this, so we were a little cautious on, on the forecast and saying we were going to be at three percent. And actually, the week before we did this, we were just doing some forecasting, we were looking at, the way the trend was going, we thought we'd get like two point seven, two point six five, two point seven on this issue. So when it did come in at two point three eight, I was very absolutely pleased with that. We were seeing about a twenty-five basis point increase each, each week. So we actually, I was actually getting a little panicky about the whole thing because of the way the rates were going. Twenty-five, twenty-five basis points a week, you know, as we were talking about two. At the point, a week before the sale, a town sold in Connecticut and they sold very similar to us. There was an S and P triple A, they were a twenty-year, thirty-five million dollar school bond issue. And they sold for two point five five, the true interest, true interest cost. So that's very similar to, other than the Moody's, we only have a Moody's rating as opposed to the S and P rating. So it was, we were thinking two point seven, two point six five, two point seven, so coming in at two point three, I grew, we were very pleased.
With the two million five that's coming back to us.
Right.
Very good. Thank you. That's great. Questions on the debt service?
Yeah, I just have a question. I'm seeing two different numbers. So on page sixty-eight for the total of, the department request total for 2022, 2023, I see nine million, two sixty-three, three fifty-two. And then if we go to the previous page that has the summary, I see nine million, nine hundred thousand, thirty and eighteen dollars. So I was wondering which one was the actual department request?
Page Joe, I think. This one?
Okay, the, the nine million nine on the front page, that was, that was reflected before the bond sale. And that then reflected no premium, any debt service payment. So that was, that number was actually prior to what would actually occur. That's what we would have been, you know, if our, unfortunately, my forecast was true, that's what the number would have been. The nine point two, the difference there is the bond interest, the, the request that had the nine point two, the difference is the bond interest and how it took the premium. The initial thought was to take the, be more aggressive, taking the premium in terms of going, there's always a debate with, when you receive premium. Bond counsel would like you to take it all at once or as close as possible to all at once. And finance directors don't like to do that. And orders like it even less they did do that. So basically, the compromise, the original thought was we would take, we would go at a certain level. And then I decided that if they wanted to do that, I wanted to stretch it out a little further. So I went two and a half years, just over two and a half years, like two point seven years as opposed to two years or anything less than that. So, so that's basically why the department request and the manager's numbers are different. You notice the, the bond interest on the department request is ninety-six and two, and the manager's is one zero zero five, it's just taking less of the premium, taking less of the premium upfront. But yeah, the, on that other page, that's, that was no premium and a higher interest rate.
Gotcha, okay. And notice that, that number is actually at the front of the book as well.
Okay.
I just happened to notice that, yep. Thanks for the explanation.
So I have a question about the, the cash that we got back, the two and a half million dollars. You said that that should take us out about three years. So how does that fit into the overall picture of what we told residents to expect with the bonding for the new high school building? So I think, was it twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three was supposed to be the high point of what we were supposed to see? So that's still accurate, right, given this? Or if everything goes according to plan, I should say?
Yeah. It's going to really depend now how fast, how quickly we spend this forty million dollars.
Okay.
And when we need to do the next bond sale. And that will really impact what you, that'll really determine what year gets the impact.
Okay.
Any big hit that may occur. I've said before, you know, in retrospect, if you guys could have, well, if I knew if it was going to come the way it came, I probably would have looked at sixty million dollars in bonds. Because you could take, you know, I mean, I could come in here and say, well, instead of a one point six percent tax increase, it's a two point, you know, three percent tax increase. And still issue sixty million dollars and get, you know, that's half of the authorization. I mean, so basically, what's going to happen is how quickly do we spend the forty million dollars? How quickly do we need another bond sale, what the interest rates are at that point? And how big a premium we may get at that point? So, you know, after the budget's set and done, basically sit down and redo the forecast based on what just occurred to see where that next hit may, may come and be.
Okay. So that timeline is pretty much?
It's, again, it's, it's pretty much, my guess is the hit probably will not be as big. It will probably be a year later and it won't be as big as we thought it would be.
Okay.
Because we've issued, you know, double the amount of debt right now. You know, it probably will delay us. Again, our next debt issue is supposed to be next February or January.
Right.
Chances are, depending on how much, how quickly the money's spent by the contractors, that may be March or April of next year, which could delay, you know, push up the payments also.
From my vague recollection, it was twenty million and then forty million, like the biggest one was the middle, the middle bond, whatever that year that fell in. I thought that was twenty twenty-three maybe.
Yeah.
Twenty, something like that.
So yeah, we basically, then we turned it up, we, we've changed it up a little bit here. And the next bond issue may only be twenty, like again, depending on how much money we need.
Okay.
So it may, instead of being another forty, maybe twenty or maybe forty. It's really hard to say at this point. We've only, at this point in time, we've actually spent about, I mean, I had to just do this for the IRS. We actually, we spent about two and a half million dollars of the hundred and thirty-five million dollars, which kind of surprised me seeing we haven't seen anything of that amount of money at this point.
Why the planning?
Yeah.
But that was part of the plan, that two million dollars was, yes, okay. Just to get that in the record, yes.
You look, you say, well, no, no grounds was broken, you know, there's no steel going up, you know, so you're not spending any money, but we actually, we spent two and a half million dollars.
But Joe, in general, all things being relatively equal, us bonding more money is probably going to help your for, your, what your forecast is. It's not making it the work, the other way, it's helping it the forecast.
No, this, this will, I think this will make the forecast look a lot better.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there were some folks, when we had the referendum meetings, and one of the things they talked about was instead of doing the bonding as you had staggered it twenty, forty, twenty, or whatever it is at the end, that you should, you should sort of try and take advantage of those interest rates. So I think they'll be happy with that. And then there was also the idea of making it a longer term, and then there were reasons why that was not possible, given our town and the bond rating and such. Thank you.
Well, there's some, yeah, there's a thought of going, you know, to thirty years or, and then there's some thought of actually doing this at fifteen years. Again, which is our normal practice. And thirty years probably driven up the number quite a bit, on the interest rate number quite a bit. And I think fifteen years probably would have shortened, would have lowered the interest rate quite a bit. I know that, especially in this environment of rising rates, you don't want to buy, you don't want to lock yourself into a, a two point three eight percent bond for twenty years when, you know, rates three years from now might be five percent for all we know. It's unlikely, but you know, it might be, so people don't want to lock themselves. So people don't have an appetite to lock themselves in for thirty years, and even at a three percent or three, if they have any idea that they could be over four in, in two years from now or three years from now. At the same time, if you did fifteen years, they'd feel more comfortable because it's a shorter, you know, surety. And it's also probably more marketable that they need to sell it.
So you're saying the debt services isn't like your home, where you get to refinance because you don't like the rate you got and there's a lower one, so you go back into the market and bid again? Or get bids?
No, the IRS frowns on certain things, like refinancing. So you could do certain types of refinancing, but you cannot do it just at any time. And we also have a threshold. You have to basically have savings of at least two percent. If you don't have savings of at least two percent, then it's, the cost benefit of doing it just isn't there. We actually had the opportunity, we did an analysis and we did identify some debt that we had out there. And the opportunity to refinance it, it is eligible for refinancing and we could have refinanced it, but the, the savings would have been like one point four percent. And, and actually, that debt had just come out of the water with the IRS and I felt we're saving to one point four percent and another risking another IRS story, I just didn't want to do it. So we passed on that.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Joe, just one other. You were saying when we need the next money or the forty million, do we have to spend the forty million before we can take out?
No, we, we have to, we have to spend, we have to basically spend two thirds of it in the next two years. And I anticipate that, based on the forecast, the cash flow analysis, I've seen we should, that should not be a problem. And because it takes so long to actually do a sale, and this, literally not this sale, the process for the sale started in December. And in December, we said, let's, let's pick a day in February and have a sale. And we said, okay, now who's selling at this point? They said, nobody's selling the week of the February twenty-third. I said, no, book it, you know, or the week, whatever, February twenty-first, I said, book it, you know, we'll sell on February twenty-third. And that's when we started the ball rolling. So in December, we started the paperwork, we started the process of doing this. And what will happen is as we start to get down, we look at the cash, how the cash is going out, we'll determine how, how quickly we're going to run out of money. And then we'll start the process, knowing that we need like a three-month lead with, to, even before the funds will actually put in place. So, so, you know, probably, actually probably it's December of this year, we'll look again and see where we're at, how, how quickly the money's going and plan our next sale. And, you know, provided that we, if we're at half, maybe, you know, even close to half the money being born at that point, or projected to be born within three or four months at that point, we'll do a sale.
Good, thank you.
So that is our debt, which is page sixty-eight?
Sixty-eight. Make a motion to approve page sixty-eight of the town manager, temporarily approve page sixty of the town manager's proposed budget 2022, 2023.
Second? A motion to second, any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
So then if you just quickly go back to your front page again and see that we've done the education, the town, the debt services. We did capital improvements already at the, at the February meeting. We'll talk about that tomorrow when we do our wrap-up. And then the last item that we wanted to talk about, if you go down, is the revenue paid, revenue part. And as you can see, we have other property taxes, license and permits, fines and penalties, interest, grants, service charges, other, and Westwoods. And our new number is eleven million, four hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and twenty, which is an increase of non-tax revenues of one million, seven hundred and eight, eighty, five hundred and seventy-three, which is eighteen point four eight percent. And if you go to now in the revenue section, which is the first page, it shows it, it breaks it out for the first two pages. And just, I'll give you some highlights, is that under state and federal grants, we've talked about this before, that we, it has been substantially increased from last year. The town received an additional one million, six hundred and forty thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars in pilot funds from the state of Connecticut. So that's really great. Charges and services revenue is expected to increase due to the strong real estate market. The town clerk's office has been able to collect a significant amount of revenue from the conveyance, tax and recording fees. The Westwoods golf course is, account is a, they pay, the Westwoods golf course contributes to the operating budget, and that's three hundred and twenty thousand. And that Joe just mentioned before, under other, is the revenue, seven hundred and seven, one twenty-six is payments to other major users. That's, that's for the treatment plan. So if you go down on each section, the license and permits is up eleven point one five percent. Fines and penalties is a minus eighteen point nine. Interest is up twenty percent. The state grants is up thirty-one point three, and that's the state grant that I just mentioned. Charges and service up ten point eight, and that's our, what we talked about with the conveyance. And if you flip the page over, the other, the other revenues, and then the transfer in is the Westwoods contribution. And the other assessments are going to be going down because as the interest, as the twenty-year loan for the other towns, every year it gets less and less for the treatment plan. So that's why that's decreasing. But in general, the revenue side of the budget of non-tax revenues has really done quite well. You know, again, this budget, there's a lot of things that have gone right. I usually, we usually see parts of the budget that have gone right. In this budget, a lot, almost everything's gone right, and this revenues has gone right too. So I don't know if you have any specific questions about the revenue side?
Questions on revenues?
Questions on revenues? We like those new cars.
What was that?
We like the new cars. People keep buying cars.
So if you wanna, it would be a TA, Joey, I would just TA it as the revenues?
I'd like to make a motion to temporarily approve the revenue side of the town manager's proposed budget for twenty-two, twenty-three.
Second?
A motion of second. Any further discussions? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
So if you go back to the front page, the tax and budget worksheet, and we've basically made it through the budget. We've made through what we're supposed to do today and what we're basically gonna do tomorrow night. As you can see, we have the expenditures at four-point-three-oh percent, which we just discussed. The grand list, which we didn't discuss, but we can talk about that briefly right now, is, the grand list is the grand list. It's going up one-point-seven-two percent, and the majority of that is in the motor vehicles, and that's the cars, and that's unbelievable, it's sixty-three million dollars, plus or minus, additional to the grand list. So that's what's driving this grand list increase, which is really helping our budget. And then our other non-tax revenues is up eighteen-point-four-eight percent. And if you go down to the bottom, that shows what your tax rate is. It's a twenty-nine-point-two-eight percent mill rate, with a point-four-seven percent mill rate change for a one-point-six-three percent tax increase for the average residential assessment at two-twenty-six. So that's where we are right now. We've gone through everything. And so typically, we would probably break now and then reconvene tomorrow. But tomorrow would maybe just to maybe review some of the capital again, and kind of have a overall discussion about where you would want to be, and have some motions, and that's it.
Which we could do tonight, but I think it would be nice to sleep on all this, and we'll come back in tomorrow and, and have further discussions on it. It's, the numbers look tremendous. Again, the revenues are fantastic. We did what we were expecting to do coming into this budget, and we kept everyone's spending where we were looking for it to be. We just gained this extra benefit with the bond issues, that was tremendous. So we've had a lot of things working in our favor for this budget, and it looks incredibly attractive. So, yes, I would say, we come back tomorrow, we discuss a little bit more. We can talk about the puppy dog, and whatever else we want to discuss on this budget.
Yeah, and then I, I think, unless you guys have some different plan, I think that we could probably wrap it up tomorrow.
Do we still get dinner?
No. Not if we start at four o'clock.
I agree. That's an incentive to get it done.
Thank you, Johnny.
Just a word, a couple of years ago, they said that they were gonna wrap it up early, cooking up Saturday morning, so they didn't have breakfast. By the clock that night, they all went to bed.
I've got, I've got a pizza place on, on speed dial. I'll pay. I'll buy it.
Uber delivers.
You have to throw out the cardboard.
Oh, that's funny, though.
Okay, well then, I think we're looking pretty good. I will leave you with the quote of the evening. Victory is always possible for the person who refuses to stop. And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn the March ninth, twenty-two regular town council meeting.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We are adjourned at seven forty-nine.